I'll go ahead and call the budget work session for May 18th, 2017 to order. First off, I appreciate everyone that's here in attendance. Many of y'all have been to these before, so I give a little introductory speech. This is, I think we're on about the eighth meeting now. I'd have to go back and look at the calendar to see. But we've been having these in the evenings. We had one one morning, we had one all day Saturday, going through and discussing various departments, looking at the budget in detail. And again, I'd remind everyone, while we appreciate the members of the public that are here, that this is a work session for council. There's no place on the agenda for public comment, but there will be ample opportunity for the public to comment. You're more than welcome to make a comment during our next regularly scheduled meeting, the 23rd, during non-agenda items. And we will have a public hearing on the budget on Tuesday, May 30th, at 6:00 PM. And at that point, we, the public is welcome to comment. We look forward to hearing the comments from the public. But to get to that point of having a public hearing on the 30th, I'll remind the council, means that we need to come up with a budget ordinance that we can, a majority can agree on, and that the city manager can advertise in time, so that that advertisement can be placed in time to meet the requirements for the meeting. So with that being said, depending how this goes tonight, it may be short, it may be long, but we have got to make sure that we finish tonight and have an ordinance that the city manager can get advertised in the paper, so that we can have the public hearing on the 30th. And then after we hear from the public, they'd give us some time to consider their comments. And then we'll have the first reading scheduled for our regular meeting on June 30th, or June 13th, excuse me. Okay. That being said, we're moving to the agenda. Item number one, police department discussion. Chief Austin is here, and I believe you were the one that had the questions.
Yeah, I questioned the other night when we got into the capital projects, the three vehicles. And my question was, have we, have we come to the agreement with council that we're gonna let the police officer numbers stand? And that was my question. Because they're requesting three vehicles, and we gotta get through the capital project. And so we needed to talk more about the police.
Okay. Do you want to, I apologize, chief, I didn't realize you have a presentation here.
Well, no, that was, the presentation is kind of based on staffing.
Okay. I didn't know if it's, I appreciate you doing that, by the way, chief. I appreciate the effort going into that.
Are you gonna ask any questions, Mr. Wingard, or, because I'd like to ask the chief a couple of things.
Well, you can start, I have no problem with that.
How are you again, chief?
I'm good.
I think we've heard from you more, I think we started in January, February of this year, and you probably talked to her more than you care to talk, I bet.
Yeah, that's true, too.
Yeah, 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 I understand. Chief, let me ask you two or three things. It's my understanding that there has been some attrition in your department within the last couple, three weeks, or month, or so, that some people have left, and for other jobs, and/or just quit. Is that accurate, sir?
That's correct. We currently, and when I say this, we currently have four vacancies, actually five. One is an evidence clerk, but we have four patrolmen vacancies. Two have quit, two will be leaving next week, when one Wednesday, one Thursday. One due to medical reasons, and the other one got another job.
Okay. So your budget, as it stands now, would be to staff those four positions that are leaving. Is that accurate, sir?
Yes, or staff all five, counting the evidence clerk.
Or counting all five, okay.
Yes, sir.
So theoretically, though, is it feasible or possible to try to have a freeze on hiring and keep the numbers where you are right now, and even use admin people to assist with patrols and so forth and so on, if necessary, to see where we are, and come back and look at the, filling those vacancies, potentially, say, in three, four months, chief?
Okay. We just finished our testing process and actually be interviewing next week, but in regards to that, if we don't fill these four vacancies, then overtime is probably gonna go out the roof. And I tell you this, because we have, two of the patrol shifts are short a person now. We have one that is deployed as active military.
Is that Johnson?
I'm sorry?
Is that Officer Johnson?
No, that will be Casmerick.
Okay, well, Officer Johnson's a fine officer you have.
Thank you. But Officer Johnson will also be going active sometime between June and August. We also have three others. Two will be going active for their summer training, and don't know, at least two weeks, don't know how long they'll be going, or will be active any, through the rest of the year. I have one on FMLA. I have another that will be going on FMLA, due to health reasons, and so to not fill these vacancies would be detrimental to the police department.
All right. Now, let me ask you something, chief. In the schools, the school resource officers, and I had an opportunity this afternoon to speak to our city manager, and she was kind enough to say that resource officers are counted as members of your numbers, correct?
That's correct, but they are grant funded.
Okay. Now, my question is, I understand high school has summer school and so forth and so on. It's a year-round situation. I don't know about the middle school, but certainly the elementary schools, I would assume, don't have summer school, per se, where they actually, I mean, if they do, they've changed the game. And my question is, what happens to these officers if there's not school in session? Do they stay out there when there are no students and so forth, chief?
No, sir, in the summer, the high school and the middle school does have summer school that goes, middle school also. Van Pelt Elementary School also has school year-round, especially with special needs. They don't break that cycle. And they have the other elementaries, I forget the name of the program, but it goes year-round.
B-180.
What is it?
It's the B-180.
B-180, goes all summer at the middle, at Van Pelt. But the other three school resource officers, there's nothing happening at that school during the summer, and they are used to fill in on patrol, they're used downtown, they're used to do foot patrol and rise terrace, that's, you know, and housing projects, and wherever we may need them. So they are used throughout the summer, especially with people taking vacations and sick leaves and so forth, and the shortage that we have.
Okay, just, and then, okay, putting those two factors together, knowing that there'll be three officers which will be available because of the summer break and so forth, is it not a feasible possibility to, instead of hiring four new, to hire two new, see where we are at the end of summer, when the resource officers are called back to school, and then come back and look at the other two, rather than budget them, or potentially budget them now, but not necessarily hire now? I mean...
Well, Mr. Flinner, or Councilman Flinner, that, they're already factored in when we, the three officers that'll be patrolling in the summer is factored in already. And with the current mil, people leaving with military and FMLA, we're still gonna be extremely short.
Okay. And where are you, we talked about possibility of trying to expand volunteerism among policemen.
Right now, the best way we have found to do that, and this will take some time, because it's when an officer leaves that, our, my opinion would be to, when that officer resigns or leaves, is to see if he would join a reserve status or an auxiliary status. He would be already trained, he would already have his equipment, we would just change the patch, he would already have his weapon, and we build that reserve status. Now, it depends on which level that we seek to get these auxiliary officers, and whether we have to train them, and we also would have to add, depending on the level, and whether we would be paying for them to go to the academy.
Look, and there's some that are retired now, that maybe you could reach out to, that are actually retired in the community and so forth, and have, not only the police, but the military training, there would potentially be some leaders of, you know, future volunteers and so forth. Is that accurate?
Councilman Flinner, we actually reached out to the ones that's retired.
Okay, so I'm already, I'm behind the game.
Actually, had argued to, I mean, had argued, we had actually offered to pay them to come in, for some of the military people, because one of the military ladies has been gone since, you know, for almost a year now. And my understanding, will be gone for at least another six months. So we had offered to pay part-time to fill that void until that person could come back, and they won't even come back and work part-time.
Okay, well, can't blame them, I guess. Thank you, chief, very much. Thank you for the job you did.
One question, do you feel that, when you say overtime would greatly increase, would it really increase as much as paying additional officers? With considering salary and fringe benefits, are you saying overtime would exceed those values?
I think it would be close. I don't know that, Mr. Hubbard, to be honest, because when we start paying time and half...
I mean, that would mean you'd have to be working the job of two men hour-wise to get that overtime to where it would equal paying a salary for a brand-new officer.
That's correct, but I don't have that answer as far as how much overtime it would entail. I know we're using a lot of overtime now, to fill just the shortage that we have at this time.
I think I agree with Councilman Flinner, that we probably, maybe can budget for it, but not hire them right now, and let's go down the road a bit and see how it works out. I mean, the overtime is gonna be there, granted, but is it really gonna exceed the value of what it would cost us to hire a full-time replacement? So I'd like to kind of see the numbers before we pull the trigger, I guess, is what I'm saying. Is that a possibility?
Yes, sir, I understand that, but with also implementing the traffic detail, and creating overtime at that, for people to be working, then you're really starting to work officers a tremendous amount of time, overtime.
Well, I mean, I agree that, I'd just like to see it happen first, I guess is my question. I'm not saying don't put it in the budget, I'm saying let's, let's see it happen first. Okay?
Yes, sir.
In other words, Councilman Hubbard, you're basically agreeing, hire two now, see where we are, and budget for four.
Leave it in the budget, but just don't spend the money until we're fully satisfied that we can't cover it with our folks that we have now, and even though they're gonna make overtime pay, we can get a chance to see, is that gonna cost us more? Which, which way to go, I guess is the question.
And also, it gives us an opportunity to see how the traffic division actually works out, you know, in a few months, after we, you know, getting into the vol this year, and seeing if that's actually working out well, or if the cost of overtime exceeds the tickets that we run. So it's kind of a hedge.
Well, talking about the traffic, I don't know what y'all are hearing, but I'm hearing, you know, we need to shoot more radar inside the city. You know, that the interstate's a whole nother issue, because people are exceeding the speed limit in some areas by a large margin. You know, a mile or two's one thing, but 10's another. So, you know, we need to, we need to focus in on that a little bit. But one question I'm gonna ask is, I mean, surely, the department has, first, let me go here. You say that you have six patrol officers on duty at any given time. What other support does our law enforcement have out there? Do you have support by the state police? Do they ever come in and assist on different situations?
No, sir, the only support we get is if we have something going. The state police would come in if we had some type of crisis to help us, or something's going on in the interstate, vice versa. If the state police is tied up, then we go to the interstate to assist them, and that happens more times than the other way around. If we have some big type of emergency or something's going on, the sheriff department is the one who supports us. But we don't have anybody, the state doesn't come in and answer calls and work active patrol or anything like that in the city.
Okay, but if things really got bad, you've got support out there with the state and the sheriff and different agencies.
To some extent, yes.
Okay. All right. My next question is, is there anybody in the department that tracks? We've got 13 miles in the city, you've got six patrol officers positioned, that's a little over, they're covering a little over two miles of territory each. Is there anybody tracking the, the spots that require more police presence than other sections of the town?
We don't have an analytical person, if that's what you quest, are asking in regards to placing people in hotspots or so forth. We basically do that in reference to what our citizens call in and complain, and where we're having the, you know, the amount, a large amount of calls, then we would direct patrol or heavy patrol in that area, or certain hours, or so forth. And it's answered that way, but we do not have an analytical person who posts the different locations and projects at this time, anyway.
Okay, but surely, somebody has a feel as to where the hotspots are, and where, you know?
That is, but that is all over the city. And it's, you're right, in regards to speeding, we get calls every day about people speeding in any given part of the city. So when we was talking about writing, or issuing, right, starting the traffic division, it was to deal with these complaints, not just on the interstate, but in the city also.
Yeah.
You know, we wanna take care of our city first, but...
Yes.
They would also be in them locations, where we getting the complaints, like, as you were saying, the hotspots are the complaints with speeding.
So we don't do like Hollywood and have a nice big map and have all these little pins where everything's happening, and if there's nothing going on over there, why have a patrol over there when we got all this action here?
Not directly, but that, that is the way that policing is going, along with community policing, I mean, you...
You can track it, chief, by warrants that have been written and so forth. Realistically, if you wanted to go through the warrants for arrests that were written, you could track, somebody could do that, and do an analytical survey, but, I mean, that's just, would you agree with that?
We could. You might have, you might have to buy some more software in order to do that, which you could.
Yeah. And another question is, you know, with the scheduling, and I'm not trying to micromanage you and your department in any, any shape or form, but in, the odds are, Monday night's not as busy as Saturday night, now, you know, but you never know. And that's the thing, when you're dealing with the public, you never know. But I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards our, Mr. Hubbard here, you know, on a freeze on a couple of the positions, and wondering if we can't just work through some scheduling, till we can get a better handle on where we're at.
Sorry, we can budget for it, but let's go down the road a bit, see if it's really gonna be needed, or have it financially advantageous, get the coverage by paying overtime versus...
Yes, and I, and I do have a business, and sometimes it is, it's better for me to pay overtime than to hire another employee. Because, I mean, when that employee hits, hits the time clock, I mean, you gotta give them X number of hours, or they're gonna leave. So that's a big commitment, whereas if you're falling short on, you know, a time slot, you can pay, you can pay that overtime and get through that. So, but like I said, my issue was the vehicles, or, you know, and that's what's brought this all about again, because I'm convinced we're vehicle poor. I see city tags all over this town every time I turn around, and I'm thinking, good gosh almighty, when are we gonna quit buying vehicles?
Well, I'll tell you what...
And 100,000 miles on a vehicle with today's engineering is not that much. It is nothing for us to put 150,000 to 175,000 miles on a vehicle, and them still be viable.
Mr. Wingard, here's one thing we can stop a little bit of that. You know, we've had this talk, and we've had this banner, and we as well hit it here than somewhere later. We've had the back and forth about where we take our vehicles, we've had the 15-mile range, we've had the five-mile projection, and so forth and so on. I think there needs to be a blanket, here and now, no matter who you are, and what your position is, you leave your vehicle here, and you drive your personal vehicle to work. That's what happens in the private sector for a typical, unless you're a CEO of a company. And, you know, you can save a few of those miles, perhaps, by not taking them outside the city. So I disagree with the idea that modern technology and modern equipment and so forth, after 100,000 miles, if you're involved in chases and so forth and so on, I have a suspicion that that engine gets a little hot and so forth. So 100,000 miles may be jeopardizing officers and so forth and so on response, if we don't do something about that.
Well, I would have to say that those vehicles get a whole lot better maintenance than your personal vehicle.
I guarantee it gets better mine.
And if we're not maintaining them, then shame on us, those vehicles that...
I drive mine till they break down, and I go get another used one. That's how I work, but...
And since you brought it up, I'm gonna let, I'm just gonna step out there and say I'm in favor with the, the mindset of, if it's a city vehicle, it should stay inside the city. We don't need to be paying for maintenance and, and fuels for people that live outside the city limits. You know, we can't help where you live, we can't dictate where you live, but that is a city vehicle, and we get complaints about city vehicles being everywhere. I passed one a couple of weeks back out in, in Mendota, not Mendota, uh...
Benham's.
Benham's. It was a city vehicle heading out to Benham's. You know, if they're a city vehicle, they need to stay inside the city. The taxpayers do not need to be spending that fuel and maintenance and wear and tear on them vehicles.
And if you can't afford to drive your own vehicle to work, then you need to work near where your home is.
And I believe we pay everybody inside the city enough money to drive a decent vehicle to get them back and forth to work.
Yep. But if they live inside the city, they could take it home, because I think it is a deterrent to crime.
Yeah, if it's inside the city, that's fine. That's a, that, that right there is an incentive for city employees to live inside the city, share the burden of everything that the city goes through. If you live outside the city, then you're exempt from some of the experiences that a silly, that the city has to experience. So if you live in the city, I have no problem with you taking your vehicle home. If you live outside, it needs to stay in the city.
And be glad you're not taxed on being able to do that as it is. Okay? Realistically, that is a tax that you have a credit, that taking credit for, if you've lived and driven it. So, you know, and however many years that's been done, it may not seem like a lot, but adds up.
I'm, I'm gonna say, I, I mean, you guys set your policy as far as city vehicles, I don't have any control over that. But I will disagree that it is not a benefit to, it is a benefit to that officer to take it home, but it is a benefit wherever that vehicle may be sitting, whether it be in the county, whether it be in the city, and whether they respond. Just like I said the other day, when they responded, when this trooper needed assistance, if it wasn't for them having take on vehicles, that never would've carried. And we don't know if somebody would've lost their life, been seriously injured, or anything else. So if you weigh the couple hundred dollars that you may save by parking the vehicles in the parking lot, which creates another issue, versus possibly saving somebody's life or some assistance when that time comes, I mean, that's your choice, but I do disagree. I mean, you make that policy.
I mean, that's reasonable, chief. I mean, I understand that. It's nothing personal, it's just a matter of taste.
Yeah, I understand, there's merit there, and we have to consider that. But, you know, if we have six patrol officers on duty at all times, and then, let's say, let's say there was a shooting, that, in that situation there, the state troopers would've been there to back you up. And, you know, I believe we had the resources in place to handle that situation, it was just, it just happened to be that they was coming in.
I disagree.
You disagree?
I disagree.
Well, you would know more than me, because you're, that's your field.
Because we didn't have enough people to set up a perimeter, we had an off-duty officer who stopped to assist the trooper that was coming in, we didn't have enough people to answer calls, but this is just one occasion. Like I said before, there's been times that something's been going on a half a block away that an officer responding to the PD, to road call, to court, to whoever it may be, that can stop that incident right then and there, because they can hear that, and they can respond with their equipment and so forth. Okay? And I think that outweighs the few dollars that the city will save. But like I said, that is your choice in making that policy, and we respect whatever decision you make.
About how many people that affect? How many people that affect?
To park the vehicles inside the city.
If we did, city only.
Pardon?
Well, right now, we're within five miles, that cut out six people, okay? And it would cut out probably another five, six people.
And that's just your department, though, that's not counting the fire, and that's not counting X, Y, or Z, but also the city administration and so forth and so on, that we...
But I don't know of anybody else that takes their vehicles. Fire doesn't take vehicles.
But you don't take yours home, Miss Crum.
I don't know, nobody's shit right. But I mean, this, the police is the only people that I'm aware of that takes a vehicle.
Public Works has two vehicles on call that, that go home. I think, to my knowledge, we've, I'm gonna look, is the fire, does fire have any that...
I have one, and I live 10 miles from here, in the city.
Well, you live, that's different, if you live in the city.
Yeah, it's in the city. Okay, I have another proposal, after listening to all this, and you have merit. That's why we need to have these discussions and talk about this, because I, I serve on DSS, and the city's full of vehicles, DSS is full of vehicles, they're all government vehicles, they're all city vehicles. Why don't we entertain the thought, since it is rescue, we let the police take theirs home and cut everybody else out?
They're not cutting out anybody.
The, the, the vehicle.
Nobody else is cutting out.
Nobody else is going that same.
Who?
Good idea.
I think none of the other city, and neither have boys are allowed to take vehicles.
DSS does not take theirs home?
Well, they're not, it's their state agency.
DSS reports to the DSS board.
But those vehicles are ours.
But they don't fall under your purview, though, in terms of some, I mean, they do you, because you're on the DSS board, but the city council can't set the policy for the DSS vehicles.
That would be the same if I did your board.
That you need to talk to Kathy Johnson.
I think there has to be, I think there has to be, there has to be some sort of premium on vehicles taken home. Period. In other words, if you're allowing policemen to take their vehicles, there has to be a premium that comes out of their check.
No, that's not gonna work.
Now, let me, can I, let me, can I finish my comment?
Yeah.
Thank you. And then, in the event that they do have to serve, then they get it back. They're, they're, if I'm not mistaken, they have a one-year parameter to pursue outside the city of Bristol. You're talking about, in one circumstance that I've heard of, in the last 10 years, that we're making, we're making, we're letting the rule, or the exception swallow up the rule, Mr. Wingard. Now, there's always going to be a circumstance that's out of the norm, but, you know, I mean, that's just how it is, okay? So if you want to say, we had this one unusual circumstance, therefore, police should be able to do this, then you're allowing, like I said, you're allowing the exception to swallow up the rule. And I don't think that it's fair and reasonable, and I think that there should be a stipend, if they want to do that. And in the event they do work something out, when I say stipend, 25 a month, whatever the case may be, nothing major, but for that ability, and then if they are on a, on an emergency situation, like chief alluded to, then they get it back. But for God's sake, you know, we, we, we can't carve out exceptions forever, group.
I understand that.
Okay.
I understand that.
Thank you for allowing me to finish my remarks.
Just my thoughts.
Chief, a couple of questions I'd like to ask, both regarding the vehicles and just in general, and looking at what they were talking about with filling these positions. How does that affect response time for the officers?
In regards to?
All the, well, like, the vehicles, I mean, does that make us, would that make a significant difference in response time? But more importantly, I guess, with these vacancies, if you keep the staffing, hiring freeze or something, is that gonna decrease your ability to respond, even if you had overtime, or, I mean, what, what's the effect there? Because to me, at the end of the day, that's, if it's taking people longer to get there to, to a call, then...
Well, the average response time for us is about three minutes, give or take. Well, the average response time for us is about three minutes, give or take, depending on, on the day. Okay, if, are, are you in reference to parking, talking about parking vehicles?
Well.
Are you a reference to that paying out? Because we're gonna have somebody, we're gonna pay overtime to have somebody fill the shift.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna have a safe coverage.
Okay, so that won't.
So that won't change the response time. You'll just be paying time and a half.
And track that closely over the next four or five months, the response time is to see what effect we're having on just two new officers instead of four.
Now, it, it doesn't, it won't reflect the response time.
Right, you're just, you're gonna have guys still going to the calls. He's just gonna be working longer.
But now parking the vehicle could affect situations because they have to respond here to get that vehicle with their equipment and then respond to the scene. That may affect.
When we talk about that possibility too, Chief, realistically, you know, you had a vehicle, a SWAT person living in Kingsport, Tennessee, driving one of the superpowered vehicles back and forth to Kingsport. You stop that, okay? But realistically, I don't know what kind of engine one of those things has, but I'm sure it's not cheap on the gas. And, you know, I don't know if there's been a SWAT emergency or not, but realistically, I'm sure contingencies were made already that the gear for this particular officer would be either in another vehicle and he would meet on the scene with the gear. I mean, realistically. And you're talking the trip from Kingsport, even if you're going sirens on and so forth and so on, you're probably talking five to ten minutes, maybe difference, and you're not gonna maybe kill somebody driving from Kingsport at a hundred miles an hour. So, you know, there's good and bad in both these situations. And I don't think there's been an exigent circumstance to justify the argument that we need to have. With all respect, Chief, the argument to have, because of SWAT and exigent circumstances, there has not been one circumstance to prove that's necessary. But what we have is, that's an argument and I get it. You stop that. I mean, nobody needs to drive a vehicle from forty miles from Bristol back and forth. Should never have happened. And I bet that gas mileage on that vehicle was ten miles a gallon. And the taxpayers of the city of Bristol, Virginia picked that up in case there might have been a serious emergency situation and, you know, that never happened. So that argument falls on deaf ears here. It's a good argument, Chief. If I'm an advocate for policemen taking their vehicles home, it's a good argument. But, you know, when we have an economic situation like we have right now and circumstances, it falls on a deaf ear here.
I, I understand that. Okay, but we did stop that. That person is no longer on the SWAT team. Okay?
Did he leave the SWAT team? Because?
No, there are some more issues.
Okay.
But you're also talking a person responding without an emergency vehicle to an emergency call. He cannot run emergency to get to there. So it's, it's gonna be longer periods of time. I understand what you're saying. Okay, and, and I respect what you're saying. I'm just saying.
We have a difference.
There's pros and cons to both ways.
There is.
Well, if you got an emergency calling somebody to come from Kingsport to answer it, it's wasting your time.
Depends on the situation.
Well, if it's an emergency, that usually means we need it right now.
Well, he had a charge, thought it was a charger or a challenge.
I'm, I'm just saying, I mean, that's the only exception I can think of for Kingsport. And he's already stopped it, so we don't need to give it any more air.
He must have been a sharpshooter. He must have been a sharpshooter in a bunch. You need to have him.
Hey, Chief, how many vehicles do you have going back and forth to somebody's home? Uh, how many are out there that's moving back and forth every day?
I couldn't give you that number at the present since we've cut them to five miles. Um.
Twenty?
Uh, twenty, twenty-five.
Twenty-five vehicles.
Or more. I don't know.
If, if they go, if they, if they consume, and they're not gonna do this, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, a gallon every day, two fifty a gallon, you know, you're talking a thousand dollars a vehicle. So twenty-five thousand dollars a year is probably the maximum consumption of dollars that we're talking about here. So just keep that in perspective, you know, and I know it's not that bad because I counted three hundred and sixty-five days and it's not every day that you're moving those vehicles. So it's probably half that. So in my opinion, I'm just gonna say, we got, we got bigger fish to fry than, than that, that number is, is not a big number. I mean, it's, it's, it's a very low dollar amount.
I understand that, but you're only looking at one department.
Oh, yeah, I'm just talking, I'm talking, I'm talking only, I'm talking only police in the context of his vehicle. That's all I'm talking about.
Well, the easy answer is just move into city. Okay, I mean, just move back into Bristol. I mean, you know, we need you.
If it's just law enforcement, it's not that big of a deal. But, uh, citywide vehicles, it's a big deal.
Well, then we need to address the other vehicles and understand that and.
You tell that to people that come to you. You tell that to people come to you. It ain't no big deal. It's on video. It ain't no big deal. So folks, it ain't no big deal.
With just the law enforcement.
Okay, it's no big deal. So don't say anything to us and don't complain. It ain't no big deal. It ain't no big deal. Okay?
Well, I do, I do understand and, and if it's in the city where that, that's a crime prevention technique to have it there.
Definitely.
And there will, there will be times, and there might be only one time a year, or there might be only two times a year. It's gonna be pretty rare. You know, that that person happens to have that vehicle at his home inside the city is gonna, is gonna, is gonna be the one that shows up. So, you know, so we gotta be, um, you know, careful how we limit that because we don't wanna say it gets limited across the board and then we find that we could have had a police officer that responded to something that did make a difference and then they didn't because of that. So.
We, we didn't say that.
No, I know. I'm just trying to put it in context so everybody understands. I don't think we're saying that right. So, 'cause, 'cause I don't wanna get up in the morning and look in the mirror and say, okay, we made that decision and that was a big bad decision because somebody really got hurt or, or killed because of it, right? That's not what we're after here.
And I think it's a deterrent crime to see a, a police officer's vehicle in our neighborhoods. I really do. But I'm not interested in Washington County or Bristol, Tennessee. They got their own. Okay? And they don't pay for them, you know, if they wanna pay for them to come into Bristol, Virginia, that's their business. I don't see that many of them. But, you know, we're not either one of those. So if you live in a city, you work for the police department, you should take your vehicle home. It's a deterrent crime. If you live out in the county, five miles or less, you know, I don't know where the arbitrary figure came, but realistically, uh, that was a choice that individuals made. And, you know, it may not be much, Mr. Moonpower, but it's something. And, you know, if we're prepared to tell people, we don't, it's just minimal, the minimum, that's on you. I'm, I'm, I'm not prepared to tell people it's the minimum.
That's fine.
Well, five miles, it sounds reasonable to me. And in the case of an emergency, they certainly can get to it five miles out just as easy because they could be on the other side of town and, you know, so.
But they have their own vehicle too and they could drive into town and get their vehicle, Mr.?
Well, that, that would create a problem if they had to come in here to change vehicles and then go out on the other end of town or wherever it is. It's, when time's critical, uh, anyway.
If it's that bad and those five vehicles are needed, we're in a real big mess, Mr. Trevor. I'm just gonna tell you that right now.
Oh, I'm not saying about five. I'm just saying the five mile rule where I think we were talking, nobody can leave outside the city. Is that?
What I'm saying is nobody can, that's, that's where I am. I don't think there needs to be any, even a half mile.
All right, I thought you said five miles.
No, that's what it is right now. I'm saying, I'm saying.
Okay. Got you.
Any, anything else?
Yeah, I got some questions. Um, you remember, you remember this, uh, comparison you did, John, the locality comparison?
I do.
So, um, I'm trying to get my arms around the staffing. I'm still not there yet. So this had seventy-three FTEs, which is the entire department, correct?
Correct.
And, uh, is that currently today the same number like this?
If you count, if you count in the vacancies.
That includes vacancies.
If you count, if you're counting vacancies.
Okay. And the eleven dispatchers are still accurate?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, so you, so you take the seventy-three full-time, you subtract off the eleven dispatchers, right? You get a sixty-two number for the total full-time less dispatchers. So that's accurate. And then there's fifty-four sworn officers. So that's fifty-four sworn officers. That's part of that sixty-two.
That's correct.
Is that fifty-four still an accurate number?
Counting the vacancies.
Okay, and you have four?
Yes. Well, as, as of next week.
And so really you only have fifty sworn right now?
Correct.
Okay, so fifty. All right, and then the difference between the, um, sixty-two and the fifty? What, what, what are those? Is that the resource officers? Well, I mean, what's the?
The resource officers are considered, are accounted as part of the sworn.
They're part of the sworn, right?
That's gonna be like your clerks, your, your records clerks. It's gonna be your, uh, evidence clerk.
All right, so what, what I couldn't figure out, you got sixty-two and you subtract the dispatchers out of your full-time employees? And then you had the fifty-four. So the difference between sixty-two and fifty-four was eight, but now you're saying that's fifty. So there's twelve, twelve positions here that I'm, I'm trying to wonder what, what are the tw- the twelve here between the?
Animal control, records clerks, crime prevention, um, secretaries, office manager, that type.
So it's, so it's admin staffing kind of folks and animal control. Okay. All right, so, um, you know, I did, I did, just like I did with the fire department, looked at, you know, looked at some websites to see what the, you know, what the ratios are. And I think the chief put, uh, I think he put that in this new presentation, right?
Yeah.
So he turned to this page and he's got the FBI crime statistics, um, say that civilian and sworn personnel. So that's, that's the total department. That's everybody, right?
Excluding the dispatchers. If you add the dispatchers in that.
Excluding dispatchers, all right. Is, uh, three point four per thousand and, and then the Bristol, Virginia Fire Department or Police Department have sixty-two employees, which we just went through, excluding dispatch. So you got a ratio of three point six. So that's the, that's the ratio that you're saying you have today, right? And then on the next page, you had the, um, population of the city, which is seventeen one eighty-four. That's the estimate now. And that sworn officers, right, is two point four per thousand. That's, that's what that number is, right?
That's the national average at that time.
Yeah, the national average is two point four. And so you've got fifty-four sworn officers for a ratio of three point one. But really, you're saying you only got fifty. So that ratio currently is not three point one. It's really two point nine, right? So two point nine versus two point four, um, Bristol's population roughly costs for three officers per one thousand residents. Okay. So what I found, and I don't, you may have went to the same website. I went to the UCR.fbi.gov, the FBI website. And it showed that two point four sworn officers per thousand was the, was the number. And three point four per thousand for total appointments. That matches what the chief had. So we must have been, uh, looking exactly at the same website. I was on the FBI website to get that statistic and they had a, a write-up. All right, so when I, then when I went back and I, I looked at, um, you know, a bunch of cities to try to go back and just look at sworn officers because I think that table we had before had a lot mixed into it, right? So I tried to just do it apples to apples and got rid of, you know, everything except sworn officers, right? So, um, Kingsport's ratio, they got ninety-nine sworn officers, population of fifty-three thousand. They have a ratio of one point eight seven. Uh, Waynesboro has population of twenty-one thousand and forty-nine sworn officers. So theirs is two point three three. Staunton, two point three. Radford, two point three two. Johnson City, sixty-six thousand people, hundred and forty-nine sworn officers. So their ratio is two point two six. Coquill, Tennessee, I looked at because I'd lived there, so I knew kinda what that town was like. So thirty-one thousand people there. They have seventy-four sworn officers. So that's a two point three six. Hopewell, Virginia, which is about our size, um, thirty-nine sworn officers, twenty-three thousand in population. So that's one point seven two. And then Bristol, Tennessee was sixty-nine sworn officers, twenty-six thousand, a little over, population, two point five nine. So then when I averaged that, it said two point three seven was the average of all those. Isn't that amazing how that two point three seven comes right back to that two point four? And those are similar cities. I mean, they're around us. So everybody around us, it's a city like us, maybe a little larger or smaller, came right in at two point three seven. So then I put the fifty sworn officers with the population from Bristol, Virginia, and it's two point nine two. So that's a little higher than the, um, the average. But then I noticed that in the sworn officers, there was this school resource officer, right? And so that's really, to me, that's the discussion, right? Because I heard and I got numbers that we have six, right? Six resource officers that are assigned to the schools, or is it four? So we gotta get that number right.
Is it four or six?
Six.
Six.
There's one in every school.
How many of those are grant-funded?
And four of them are grant-funded.
Are they fully grant-funded or partially grant-funded?
There are seventy-five, two of them, three of them are seventy, are seventy-five, twenty-five, and I think the other one's eighty-twenty.
All right, so what would that be roughly? Uh, four then? Or four that are really?
There's four school resource officers that the city doesn't pay for that's grant-funded.
So we only pay for two resource officers. All right. So then you take the fifty and back it down by two, which puts you at forty-eight that are really doing the, because the other cities didn't have, they didn't have close to that many sworn resource officers or sworn officers in schools. And then you get two point eight. So when it's forty-eight people, it's a ratio of two point eight. So to get down to a two point four number, it's, uh, forty-two. So forty-two is, um, a two point four five ratio for seventeen thousand one hundred and forty-one. So that's six. So that, just that says we're, we're six more than all these other communities. So I guess one of the questions is, is there something different, right, about Bristol, Virginia that's kinda unique that really, you know, pulls that resource as a needed resource and, and, so I kinda like to hear you talk about that a little bit.
Councilman Moonpower, there's something different about every jurisdiction. Ain't nothing ever apple to apples when you compare police departments. Or, and, and I'm, I'm just saying, citywide, for, for example, there, we look at the national average. We look at the two point one to three point, but they're studied by the IACP, the International Chiefs of Police, that says that is inappropriate and useless when it comes to, you, you shouldn't compare communities, shouldn't compare police departments based on the national average. They get that national average from the UCR, like you said, from the FBI. Okay? Each city, each location has its own problems with poverty, with drugs, with whatever the case may be. I don't know their crime rates. I don't know that, but each location is different. You can't compare national average, police departments, and even your fire departments with other jurisdictions and have apples to apples. Okay?
You know, there's some, there's some argument to that. I don't completely agree with you because the communities, I said, I've been to these communities. So I know they're very similar to Bristol because I've lived in these and been there. So they're very similar. So what, what my point is, is, is there really something we need to know about that's going on here that's not going on somewhere else? Because that's how many officers they have that they're paying for in those communities out of their tax dollars, right? So, you know, the bottom line is whatever those websites say about, yeah, you can't use these ratios. This is, this is the real world. That's what they're actually paying for in those communities, right?
I agree, but I also don't know the crime rate in those areas. I don't know their condition, I don't know their issues. Okay, versus Bristol, we get calls on every day, you don't have an officer here. You sit here yourself and tasked with cleaning up the problems, you know, dealing with the drug problems, dealing with blight, dealing with all of this. If we cut officers, that's gone. I mean, we, we, we're gonna be reactive. We're gonna answer calls. That's what's gonna happen. Okay, there's no more pro act, active, you're not gonna have people in neighborhoods. You're gonna either lose a downtown officer. You're gonna lose SROs. You're gonna lose your drug officer. I mean, you can't have it both ways. We really police, we have fifty-three thousand cars that travel the interstate through Bristol. And I don't know how many get off or work here or anything else. We also deal with the state line in Bristol, Tennessee. So we're not just going on a population of seventeen thousand, you know, some, uh, people. We have a whole lot of issues. Whole lot of events, different things that entail more police. And, and I'm not saying, I'm just saying there.
I understand that.
You can't go on this national average.
I understand where you're coming from. I really do. But so then you sit down and you think about these communities. You think about Johnson Cities. There's something going on here that's not going on in Johnson City. You know, do they have more poverty housing? Do they have a higher crime rate? You know, is there something going on in, you know, Waynesboro that's not going on here? You know, you gotta think about those things. But, you know, all, all these cities I talked about are interstate cities. They all sit right on a major, you know, I forty, I eighty-one interstate. So they all have that in common. Um, some have a college, some are more of a college. So they all have that in common, um, some have a college, some are more of a college town, which you would, you might argue that, you know, college towns may not have as high a crime rate as ones that don't have that. And I will tell you, the more I thought about this, the only thing I could come back to, and I still think it's probably true, is, for whatever reason, Bristol, Virginia has a higher number of HUD housing units, right, than any place you look. And we, we woke up one day, and we've got twelve hundred, fourteen hundred housing units that are federally funded, right? And I think we've let our neighborhoods go down, and so when I drive through Bristol, and also drive through Cookeville, and also drive through Kingsport and Johnson City, I could tell you, I don't nearly see the blight and the issues in the neighborhoods that I see in some of these neighborhoods. So we've got some drug infestation here that these others aren't dealing with, and, you know, I'm, I'm getting a little subjective now, but when I look at it, that's what I see. So to me, the forty-eight is starting to make more sense to me that that is probably a fairly close number for the police department. I mean, I have really tried to reconcile, I've spent four days looking at this at every way I could think of, and I kept coming back to, we, we have just not taken care of this city, and we've got a lot more of those type housings, and that's, that's what's going on, you know? And shame on us, or whatever you wanna look at it, for allowing us to have that amount of extra, you know, type individuals in our community that drives that police, uh, resource needed, but it is what it is. So, um, so then I sat down and said, well, with that going on, is that really too low? So I looked at it from the other way, and we've got neighborhoods in this community that have got to be cleaned up. If we're gonna ever get the neighborhoods back, if we're gonna ever get development back, if we're gonna ever do the things positive that we need to do in the city, we're gonna have to clean it up, 'cause it, it's embarrassing. And I don't know what y'all think, but it's, you know, it's embarrassing to drive down Mary Street, drive down Russell, and then take those rights and lefts. And it's, it's embarrassing to drive some through these neighborhoods, 'cause you don't see that in other, in other towns of, of what I described, you just don't. A little bit, but not near the blight we've got. So one of my questions is, what if we had two additional people, or three additional people on the police department that was put on foot patrol to get rid of this problem? Or can we reallocate some resources, right? Some of these, 'cause I, I tell you, it's one thing to sit out there and, you know, take radar and give speeding tickets. I'm less concerned about the radar and speeding tickets than I am what I see going on in the neighborhoods. I'm really concerned about what I see with the drugs and what's going on in these neighborhoods. Folks, I'm starting to see some of this in my neighborhood, I'm telling you, this has gotta stop, and it's ju- it's just, it's growing, it's like, it's like a cancer. And if that's what it takes to turn it around, and I think my personal philosophy is, it's not gonna correct itself by police officers sitting in a car, right? It's gonna take him out there, walk in the neighborhood, and knowing everybody in that community by name, and knowing where the problems are to help clean it up, and get aggressive about cleaning it up. So, I'm kind of on the fence in between right now, unless I hear some arguments otherwise, of whether we leave it alone or whether we add a couple to get some foot patrol in the city to really start making an impact in a different way that we've never done before, so.
I, I suggest that, that they do all that, look into it, get a game plan together for it, and next year, come back and see what we've done, if nothing's improved, or we hadn't liked the results, we maybe not have additional police instead of what we have now. I, I just, I don't feel comfortable, I have absolutely no criminal background on either side of the fence, thank God. I don't know, I have to trust that our trained professionals know a heck of a lot more than I do, as in a hundred percent more. And so I don't feel comfortable cutting that at this time, other than what we've already discussed, not hire four, hire two, and look and see how we're doing, and then if we need two more, got no argument, but.
Well, I, I mean, if you want the additional part, to me, I think you should, if it's budget, you go ahead and fill those positions, then.
Well, I don't think we need the positions, that's the point, but I'm not smart enough to know that as a fact. And so I'm willing to look at it and pay for it if I'm totally wrong.
Chief, Mr. Moonpower talks about the blight and neighborhoods and so forth, realistically though, it would be wonderful if just putting more people out on the streets, beating the patrol and so forth like they did in the old days, would really work. But more likely than not, what, unless you're involved in the system somehow, some way, the criminal is not gonna be, he's not gonna be buddy-buddy, I don't think, with the policeman. The drug dealer isn't gonna say, hey, chief, how you doing? He might, I think I'm conning, but for the typical person, and the criminal justice system doesn't work like, I think, this is a, this is a drug house. You know, so I'm gonna kick the door in with my gun out, and I'm gonna arrest these people. You've got to have reasonable probable cause to get a search warrant, to go in and so forth and so on. It would be wonderful if we go back to cowboy days, we'd, we'd have a lot less crime if we go back there, because, you know, the old sheriff would come in, kick the door in and shoot with his six shooters or whatever, and you wouldn't have as many criminals. But that's not how it works. We have a court system, we have constitutional system, and, you know, you know, it's not a crime to be poor, it's a crime to stay there. Okay, and these blighted areas, sorry, that's what most of the people, a lot of the people can do, they can't do any better. And I'm not somebody that thinks that we need to do anything to the poor people that are getting by and so forth and so on, and I'm not gonna criticize neighborhoods in my city. I'm not gonna do it, I think it's inappropriate and wrong. I don't drive by one neighborhood and ever think, that's a blighted area, I'm, I'm ashamed of that area. 'Cause I know that the people live in those homes, that's the best they can do. So I apologize if I, if I, if I, if I, there's nothing we can do. Sorry. Poverty, you know, we can't change it. Four people, five people on council can't change it, chief of police can't change it. And, you know, I, I, I just, I, I loathe the statement about our blight and so forth and so on, I, I just, it's appalling to me, uh.
And it, it's been that way for many years, and it's.
Well, it's appalling to say, talk about it as a council, okay? I'm sorry, that's, that's reprehensible.
Well, I'll apologize to Mr. Flainer if that's the way he took it, I, my point is, um, we've gotta have a community that's gonna want people to live and stay, and developers change it, and when you look at other communities, it's not let certain neighborhoods go down, they've, they've done a pretty good job of doing that. So, you, you've got, you can't just accept the status quo, and it has been that way for a number of years, and it's not just the poor people. I mean, we, a lot of that's, uh, the HUD one housing, where we're renting them out and, uh, making money off of it, but there's lots of reasons for it. So we're not down on who, who lives in those neighborhoods, it's just, you can't let that go on forever, because it, it collects things that forces the police department to have to deal with, and makes our community unsafe long-term, it's gotta be cleaned up. So, I would like to see it cleaned up long-term, right? So that's what I'm saying, and I'm not saying that the drug dealer or whoever's living there, people are gonna get buddy-buddy and know ya, that's not what I'm saying. It's the other people that live in the neighborhood that, that notice things going on that don't seem right, and tell that officer that's on foot patrol in the neighborhoods, like, you know, there's something, there's something unusual going on, just pay attention and check it out. And I think that kind of stuff gets a lot of focus on things that shouldn't be going on, and, and get some police activity to try to figure out if it needs to be dealt with, so, um, so anyway.
I think the BML magazine that we all get had a really good article in there about abandoned homes. Instead of just doing nothing about it, you have an ordinance that says if it's been shuttered and it isn't hooked up to the utility company for more than sixty days, you have the privilege of tearing it down. Now, be, that being said, it costs a lot of money to tear homes down, we've got a lot of homes that I've heard councilmen talk about for years that we need to tear down, but they don't have the guts to allocate the money for it.
Go up Fairmount Avenue, Mr. Hubbard, go up Fairmount, go up Fairmount Avenue in Bristol, Virginia, where my office is, go up there.
Yeah.
There's grass that's a foot and a half tall in places, vacant buildings and so forth and so on, Mr. Wingard has a piece of property right up from my office. You know what exists in grass that's a foot and a half long? Snakes, rats, insects. So, you know, there's ways we can do that, we can tax that, we can cut it down, which we should be doing, we can cut the grass down and so forth and so on, and bill it to the, to the people, and we should do that.
Yeah.
But that's at least, that's a small step, but realistically, we, you know, we can't change a lot of things, folks. We just, to say that we can is, is, is putting us somewhere that we're not a capable being, we're just not capable. And I, I think that's a discussion for, you know, some, some utopian, whatever, society thing, that everybody lives in, with rainbows and lollipops and unicorns, and everybody's happy and everything wonderful, but guess what? Uh, that's not the real world, and we don't have the money, we don't have the money in Bristol, we don't have the money in America to fix it, sorry, we don't.
I know, and that, that was what I was gonna end up saying, is that it's all grand, grand ideas, but there's, you just don't have that kind of money to do what everybody wishes we could do.
Wouldn't it be nice, though?
They, they wish we could do it, but not charge them any money for it.
I wanna go to La La Land like a lot of the people still live in.
Alright.
Okay.
I guess, one, are there any more questions to the chief?
No, but thank you, chief, for everything you do, sir, I want you to know that, you, you have a very good department, sir, you really do.
Thank you.
And then I guess the, the next question would be, is there, uh, do we want to make any adjustments to the budget for the police department?
I believe there are at least two people, I don't know if we have three, that said you can hire two, but don't hire the other two, but we'll put the money in the budget.
And see where we are in about three or four months, is that what you're saying, Mr. Hubbard?
Yeah.
Yes, is that reasonable, chief?
Probably be four months, get a better picture.
I like that idea, and we're gonna do leased vehicles, except we're gonna purchase one, as far as the capital is concerned, we're gonna lease two, and purchase one used detective vehicle, and that what we came to, which would be a hundred and some thousand dollars.
If he does the math on the four that's left, he should be setting with some extra vehicles. We shouldn't have to buy another vehicle. If he's got two that's quit, there's two of the three.
Okay, okay, I didn't think about that, okay. But we still have to get a detective vehicle, we have to buy.
If you postpone hiring the other two, do you still need a vehicle?
I don't know if everybody has an assigned vehicle at this point in time, I'd have to go back and get it now.
Well, let's, let's do this, let's leave that in the budget for the time being, and if we don't need it, don't spend it, throw it in reserve. Does that sound good?
Makes sense.
That way we don't have to know it tonight, we can find out two months, they can take it out of the budget any day.
Mr. Hubbard, what you're saying then is, we're leaving everything as is right now, because we're, we're, they've asked for fifty-four, we're gonna fund fifty-four, but we're only gonna do fifty-two right now, and we're gonna keep the vehicles out in limbo at least and see in res- in reserve, so we're not touching that, is that right?
Right.
Okay.
It's in the budget, but it's not gonna, waiting to see if we have to.
So you're, you're not making any changes to the budget, that you are trying to advocate for a temporary hiring freeze? To, to leave one of those for how long?
For two. Four months.
Yeah. Four months on the other two, chief. Just say, yeah, it's a lot easier.
The jet bracket-based program that we're trying to start with the city is dividing the neighborhoods, we're not coordinating staff, part of that.
You can work with it.
Well, that was based on what we already have, yeah.
But we won't be able to do that if you have the, if you're.
Yeah, I, I say it's, it definitely will need to be, uh, looked at next year to see how we're doing, that's, that's for sure.
Four-month hiring freeze from Joe, I wanna know that for the two.
Well, let me, the, how does this work when you hire people and, and getting them trained and stuff? I mean, I know you, you know, you don't just hire somebody and they walk in tomorrow, I mean, I guess depending if they already have certifications and stuff.
Are you still paying them?
I- if they, right, we are still paying if they go through the academy, but now, if we hire somebody, if you let us hire somebody in four weeks or four months, that person still ha- can't go to the academy till the next academy.
Alright.
And this academy starts in July, July thirty-first, I think it is, is when the next academy starts, it's eighteen-week academy, and then after that, they got two to three months of field training with a field training officer. So, we wait four months to hire.
So you really, you know what you're saying, you're, you're missing a window to get, if, the, the hire trained.
Correct.
So, well, I would say, if, if we've got the money in the budget, and, and it have an impact on community policing, and we've talked about the need for that, and, and I would, I mean, we're not, there might be a potential savings, but I'd say there's no real increase, and we could see how some of these things the chief has talked about, and, and look at next year.
So the academy only does July training and none, none of, during the year?
They do two academies a year, one graduated today, we had an officer, actually, that graduated in this group today. But now, she still has to go through three months of training. They'll have an academy that starts normally in January, one that'll start in,
Well, I mean.
In July.
Couple of months, they can learn something that you, what our routines are, before they go to the academy, there's nothing wrong with that, is there?
No, and that's assuming we can't hire someone in advertised position in October that's already trained, I mean, you know.
Well, that's a possibility, get a train per, but assume you don't, you still, from October to January, and all that much time, they can be learning all kinds of stuff that we do locally.
Yeah.
No, what, what I'm saying is, if we don't hire now, then we miss the window to start this July academy.
Right, we, yeah, we're talking about hiring two now.
Right, but I mean, talking about the other two.
Right, they have to go in January.
With all respect, chief, that's, that's assuming that all we're gonna do is hire from the academy, if we have spaces available, there are officers that are already trained from the academy that work perhaps in Abingdon Town, or wherever that would be already trained, is that not?
That's correct, we just did a testing process for this hiring process, okay? We have went from seventy-five applicants till we had eleven people apply.
Yeah, there's a lot, too, people don't realize it, oh, because, yeah, all I have to do is have a uniform, and I'm ready to go.
Well.
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I still think if it's in the budget, we go ahead and.
Well, I'll leave it up to the majority.
That's, that's where I'm at.
Okay, there's two others that are there.
What was the, you're saying, you're aware now?
Go ahead and hire them now, so they go to the July academy.
If it's in the budget, just, yes, 'cause I think having the, the, the personnel for what the chief's been talking about, wanting to do with some of the community policing and stuff, um, you know, and not having to wait, 'cause you'd have to wait until, if you waited four months, you'd have to wait until January for them to go to the academy and.
But that would be a two-month wait. If we hired, if we had a four-month hold on them right now, then we hire them in October, they got November and December, it can start in January, so that's eight weeks that they can get acclimated to our system before they go to training. So I propose we hire the, let, let them hire the two, put two on hold, keep the budget in place on the salary side.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
That's reasonable.
Okay. And.
And we're funding it, we're just.
So that means we're down to needing one vehicle if it's not already in the inventory.
So it makes no impact on the budget, I guess.
And it has no impact on the budget.
Unless they don't, we find out they don't need the vehicle.
Yeah.
Or we don't need additional.
For sure, you need a detective vehicle, right?
Well, the vehicles you'll be replacing is the vehicles that, uh, has high mileage, okay? And those are vehicles are probably assigned to somebody now, so it just depends on which unit you wanna pay money.
I thought the detective car, the springs were coming up and everything else, I mean, it sounds pretty bad.
Oh, we definitely gotta have that.
Okay.
It'll keep them on their toes, please, if we have springs coming up.
Any, anything else?
Anything?
Nope.
Ms. Crowder, anything else before we move past the police?
And we're letting them stay with the five-mile radius.
I'm, I'm not for that. I mean, I'm, I'm on the record, y'all, 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 I mean, I just think it's inappropriate, and I think if they do it, I think you need to ask the IRS, because it's a benefit, and they need to be taxed for it. So you need to figure out how much it costs, go back and forth every day, and there needs to be a, whatever it's called, a ten ninety-nine at the end of the year, sent for that.
Mr. Flainer, we, we did check if our ass public safety is exempt on, on that matter. Mr. Flanner, we, we did check if our ass public safety is exempt on, on that matter.
Okay. Alright, well, thank you, chief. We appreciate your time.
What was our final?
Well, what was our final on that?
No miles or five miles?
No miles or five miles?
Paul.
I, I'm not on board with him coming back here. I don't, I, I like the idea of the officers that are inside the city, leave it at their home so that they can respond and, you know, stay inside the city limits.
I'm sitting.
Okay, so they, so all vehicles stay inside the city?
Yeah.
Okay. Now.
So, I, I think we're done with the police, ain't we?
You got three votes to stay inside the city.
Three to stay inside the city.
Yeah. So.
Okay. Alright, next item, uh, clear creek golf course discussion. Mr. Barnes.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, Mr. Mayor, may I say that there have been some inquiries, and I want the public to know this. I know a lot of public, the public has been interested in it. There have been some inquiries about private entities acquiring Clear Creek. I have, I'm gonna ask the city attorney to tell us if we have to RFP or if they can do it direct. There have been two.
Is it unsolicited offers?
Unsolicited. Unsolicited interest, and what they're saying is, you know, that they would be, it would be turned into a, it would be a semi-private organization. When I say semi-private, they would still keep it to where you could go play. They would add on, they would have a pool, they would have other amenities, and they would be willing to invest in Clear Creek, uh, the area, which I think would be an attraction that Bristol could certainly need. Now, how far along this process is, if they're gonna be asking for information, they have been to Clear Creek. In the last two weeks, they've been to Clear Creek. They haven't talked to anyone at Clear Creek. They've looked, they've taken pictures and so forth and so on. They've looked at the books that they show at the city. All I can say is, if, Mr. Mr. City Attorney, I don't think that in any individual councilman can do anything, but if we can RFP and so forth and so on, and get rid of a three-million-dollar bond hole in some way, shape and form, then I think it would be an incredible opportunity to, number one, get some debt off this city, and I think, number two, to alleviate some, also another department from the city taxpayer rolls. So, let's just hold our breath. Please give me an opinion on what we need to do on that, you know, as far as council's concerned. Mr. Eads, please. It's not a matter of pressing urgency, but, you know, I think some people would like to do something and look at it, okay? Thank you.
Process for an unsolicited offer that we have to follow.
I understand. And I don't have an offer in hand, okay? I'll just tell you that, that I didn't say to, I'm gonna say, you know.
Alright. Alright. Who, who was it wanted to, had questions with Mr. Barnes?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me tell you, uh, Mr. Barnes, here's what I'm concerned is, and I'll tell you. And I'm gonna propose this to city council tonight. I said it when I ran for council. I'll say it again tonight. Bristol isn't an area where you golf in the winter. Some diehards do. I used to be one of those pools. And I'll say exactly what it is. It's a pool. You go out in thirty-degree weather, hit a ball on the green, and it ba- and it bounces thirty, thirty, forty yards past the green. Okay? And then you go on there and finally get the ball up there if you putt putt it up there, and then you're basically putting on a sheet of ice. But, but, there is a good side. By the time you get to the back nine, some of those holes have actually thawed out two or three inches. Okay? So, there is like a landing area. Bottom line is, we've asked a lot of people to cut to share in the sacrifice of a debt-ridden city. We're gonna ask for some major tests from some people. Mr. Barnes, my, what I'm proposing to this city council is a Clear Creek golf course be shut down, shuttered from December twenty-fourth at lunchtime to at least March first. And the people there, that are employed there, can get unemployment or whatever, or they can choose to have nine-month paychecks and be paid for nine months. God willing, this will be just a solution. It won't even come to fruition. Maybe, just maybe, things will happen, and it'll be sold, so we don't have to worry about it. But in, if the event, that it isn't, that's my proposal from my brothers on council, and I respectfully ask for your consideration.
Can I comment?
Yes, please do.
With this proposal, like, uh, December twenty-sixth of this year, we had a hundred and fifty-six players the day after Christmas. Also, with this proposal, we would be pushing our members, our customers, to another golf course. So, for two, two months, basically, you're sending good-paying customers, loyal customers and members to another golf course to spend their money. And in the golf business today, I mean, once you lose those golfers, they're not coming back to you. So, you're jeopardizing the whole year of our golf course, our revenues, and not to take into consideration, you're taking away from our community for the ones who do wanna come out there. And-
I guess what we need to see is revenue for those months.
And temperatures, by the way, for those particular last ten years, which I forgot to bring tonight, but I'll share it with you if we don't, you know, bottom line is, I know what I'm talking about. You, you talk about an unusual circumstance with warm weather, and you had a hundred and some golfers the day after Christmas. I will share with you that most days after Christmas for the last ten years, you stayed inside and you had a warm little-
That's true.
fireplace, and that's, that is true. So, you know, we wanna, we want the anomaly, we wanna take the anomaly of this past year and make it the rule again.
I'll give you an example. You were talking last time closing from November to February. The average revenue for those four months, on average, is a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars.
And that's counting buying stuff at the pro shop.
And, and this year, the average was a hundred and fourteen thousand.
What was your expenditures? What was the cost of doing business, salaries, product?
And that varies. I mean, at this point through the month of April, we're on, we're on track to bring you a surplus.
I know, Casey, but hit, hit, the questions are valid, so when you, when you're, when you're gonna consider, it doesn't matter if it's a golf course or anything, if you're gonna consider shutting it down and, and shutting your revenues off for whatever time period, then you gotta break your financials down by month.
Yeah.
And you need to say revenues and expenses in January, February, you gotta look at the entire month, and so, and you gotta run that P and L, basically, and you gotta take out the revenues and the expenses for those months you're talking about shutting down.
Our expenses.
Hang on, hang on. And then you, you go back in history, right? You don't just look at last year, 'cause last year could have been an anomaly on weather. So, you go back at least five years, 'cause you're making a major change, and you look at how it tracked every time, and, and, and what is the P and L gonna look like if you do this December through March? And at the bottom, at the bottom line, is it the same? Did we save money? Is it worse off? So, that's what you gotta look at before you make that decision, so you can go away and do that pretty quickly. Now, we'll say, the other thing that's at play if you do that, is you got people that actually signed up for memberships. So, if I signed up for a membership and I gave him money for an entire year of membership, and I signed a membership document, I'm expecting that golf course to be open that entire year. So, I don't know what your membership, you know, things say, but those mem- there are people that paid for that. So, you gotta take that into consideration, you know, before you, you know, before you shut it down on three months or be ready to refund them, you know, or do something, because, you know, they've, they've paid for twelve, you're gonna take away three, so you're gonna have to do something, so you gotta take that into consideration too. But you gotta take your revenues out, and you gotta take your expenses out, and then see where you are.
And, and there's some expenses that even if you shut them, we're still gonna be paying.
Well, that's called variable and fixed cost, right? So, you got, you can pull your variable costs out. That's the stuff you can let go, the fixed cost. If you still gotta pay your insurance and, and you still gotta have the heat on and stuff, and you got certain fixed costs, you leave that in there, right? It's only the costs you can peel out that you can truly get rid of, that you take out, and then you see what that looks like at the bottom.
That's why I said, though, I made it to December twenty-fourth, it's twelve o'clock noon or one o'clock, whatever, because that would only leave this year's memberships with seven days and so forth and so on. And, uh, you know, I don't think that's almost a negligible refund to, after eight hundred dollars or whatever the fee would be. It's a negligible-
Are the memberships on, on a calendar year?
We go from January to December.
Okay. And I guess the, the question you mentioned about driving people to other courses, are there any courses in this area, I mean, you know, geographically, not just in the tri-cities, but that, that should do that? That shut down, or do most courses, I, I assume you get further north, they're gonna shut down. You get further south, of course, it's better year-round weather, but-
The old farm, they, they shut down, but they're not concerned about money.
I agree.
And, and I'm sure they still have people there. I know they have people there through, out the time that they're shut down. It's just shut down for the play.
Would you agree-
But most courses around here, they stay open year-round. They don't wanna give up that extra revenue.
And then we can cut it out at that time.
Sure. In other words, yeah, listen, I, I agree with that, Mr. Hubbard.
Alright, we'll leave the budget as is. We'll have this study done, give you time to get all your numbers together, and come back in a month or two with the numbers, and then let's-
And exactly what numbers are you-
Well, we're seeing, what, what would your cost be, let's say, January second? Cause New Year's Day, there'd be people available to play if it's a beautiful day. In ten years, I think I've played one time on New Year's Day.
I think what you, you would need, and this is listening to everybody, and, and kinda what I would say as well, is for the months of November, December, January, February and March, your income and expenses for the past three years.
At least three years.
Three years, five, three to five years, your income and expenses, and noting particularly on the expense side, which of those are fixed costs and which are variable, uh, as well as probably some weather data to correlate with that. And I think that, that should give a good sense of the weather.
And also, who has memberships, huh?
Yeah.
Memberships.
And if you can, yeah, out of the people that use that, if, if, if you can break it down to people that are, say, play eighteen rounds that are members versus people that are paying that aren't members, somehow, that utilization, so we can see, you know, in February, or the people that are using it, they're already buying a membership, but they're using it versus kinda walk-up traffic. I don't know how you, you track that, but that would be, I think that's the type of stuff we wanna look at, is, is the cost and the expense, and particularly what's fixed and variable. The weather, so is, or, or, you know, kinda seeing which, if the expense went up because it's a nice mild winter versus very cold winter, what, how that shapes out, and then who the people that are coming to play during those time periods is.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, and let me, I, I know you asked for November. I think I may have said, Miss, Miss said November earlier. There's always typically, Thanksgivings are always a lot of play, Thanksgiving, so forth.
Weather.
December through-
December, yeah, I would say December twenty-fourth, because that way you get the pro shop business for people that might want to come in and buy a Christmas gift or something like that, male or female, 'cause they have a pro shop there. And, you know, I certainly wouldn't wanna cut that out. And maybe even make it January first, 'cause if they, they had to return, they would know they had to return that product by January first for a refund. Maybe make it January one till March first. I think that would sound reasonable.
So, you're just basically saying the months of January and February.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, what I'm trying to say to him is, you, you gotta look, you gotta look at that golf course like I've told you in the past. You gotta look at it like it's a business. You gotta look at it like you own it, and it's a private business, 'cause that's what they're gonna do. They're gonna look at that P and L like a private business. They're gonna say, are there days or weeks or months here that I'm upside down? I'm, I'm not bringing enough revenue in to cover my costs. And if they see that, they're gonna exactly do that. They're gonna take days out or a week out to make sure they get their finances where it needs to, and that's what we're asking you to do. Whether that's November through March, or November through February, or if it's the week of Thanksgiving, or the week of Christmas and the New Year, whether it's a two or three, you know, that's, that's part of the context of just looking at it and see where it makes the P and L look better. That maximizes the bottom line.
And it, and I do, I watch all those numbers. I've been watching our expenses, and that's why we're tracking so good this year. It's, I mean, we, we're not spending money unless it's a necessary have-to. I also, I'm not afraid to work, I work twelve, thirteen, fourteen hours a day. It doesn't matter. If, if I have to work two weeks straight without a day off, that's what I do.
We understand that.
Yeah.
We're not saying, we're not saying that, we're not saying that case.
At a golf course. We, we may not cut the budget.
Yeah.
I mean, you have the numbers.
And he's saying that I need to treat it like it's my own. I'm, I do treat it like it's mine.
No, I was trying to put, I was trying to put the, I was trying to put the discussion in context. You know, I was trying to say, what everybody's saying here, I think, is, you know, make sure you're really looking at it like it's your business and say, if this was my business and a private company, and I looked at it and I saw that the week of Thanksgiving is like, we're getting no revenues, but I'm spending fifty thousand dollars, I'm gonna consider cutting out the week of Thanksgiving. That's what we're telling you to do. Look at it in those terms and see if you need to shut down or whatever.
Can I, can I interject and say, um, somebody said two months, if possible, could we say two months after July one and bring it back in September?
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
For sure.
Because we're gonna be, we're, I'm sure he's gonna need some assistance from the financial department.
Gonna give him plenty of time to get it together.
And, and I would, I would even say if you, if, we, we said the months of January and February, but if, if you could break it even down by week, might even be better, 'cause you could look at that range of weeks.
I think by weeks asking-
Well, I, I don't know how you keep, well, I was just thinking though, 'cause-
Well, I can tell you right now, but I can tell you right now-
The weather varies so much through those years.
Well, I can tell you right now, if there truly are some unsolicited bids, and there's people interested in buying that golf course, they're gonna ask you do exactly what we're saying, and even in more detail, before they're gonna even consider anything. So, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to understand this anyway and do it, and it's probably gonna show you that there's some opportunity that you can really save some money and help the financial situation out, so just go through the exercise.
I'll remind you, like I said, I mean, we plan to bring you a surplus of money this year.
Well, you have, I mean, I told you last time, when I looked at it from where it was two years ago, you have really taken out a lot of, of money that was transferred from the general fund. It's not there now. But you're still showing a little upside down, right? It's a few thousand dollars, right? And my message was zero. You gotta stand on your own two feet, because you can't subsidize it from the general fund. There's a bunch of people in the city that could care less about the golf course and don't play golf.
Exactly. And, and I mean, and May and June are also good months for the golf course. We, we should, we will be bringing a surplus back to the city.
That's what we need, 'cause the real, the real message is figure out how to make some money, right? Bring back a surplus, so we can put money into the general fund, 'cause we need the cash. So, that's all we're saying, I think, is go away two months later, come back, really analyze it hard, and come back and say, here's what we need to do to really optimize what the finances look like.
And granted, you've taken full advantage of the fact we had no snow, we had no real winter, so that's obviously been a big help,
and I'm had, had, glad to hear it, but that's probably not gonna be the normal winter.
No, but if we have potential buyers and we RFP this thing and so forth, it's gonna look good to them.
I guess what I'm saying is that, from what I've seen, I hadn't seen a surplus at the golf course for since. It's been five or six years back.
No, two thousand and eleven.
Alright, so that's pretty close, five or six. We had that one, but then it's gone, it was gone to crap before, and it's gone to crap afterwards.
Once we went to Parks and Recreation.
Sounds like you got it under control, and I'm happy to hear it, but we need, still need to see the numbers.
Yeah, that screwed you all up, playing that Parks and Recreation.
I agree. And that was not my choice.
Tell us about your membership. It's an annual membership. When does it start?
Jan- normally, January through, uh, December.
January through December.
But you have more than annual membership, right?
Yeah, I mean, we all, now we're often monthly. If, if someone wants to join, just July, August, September, they can do that as well.
Okay, so we're good. If, if this committee decides to cut out a couple of months for next year through January and February, we're good. There won't be no refunds on memberships, because the new memberships won't take effect till January.
But you're gonna lose all those members.
It'll go from January to March if we cut them out.
Well, if I understand what he's saying, he does have people that bought memberships, so people have bought memberships this year from January of two thousand and sixteen or seventeen till the end of this year. So, if you don't cut anything until next year, then you're right.
We are talking about next year.
Right.
We are talking next year.
Well, we talked about Thanksgiving, we talked about November, we talked about, that would be this year.
I mean, this year you'd have to make it in, any change you'd make, just to honor that, so...
Refunds would be in the order of the day, if we have to do it that way, I don't see we're going to, but if we have to, give them the money back for those months. And I mean, that'll be a factor as well into our decision.
Anything else, Mr. Barnes?
No, I think it sounds really good.
The last thing I would say is, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about the outside agencies, right? How we, how we market and advertise the city, and I think you've got a big asset out there that needs to be marketed properly, right, to get more activity out there. So one of the things you should think about is, what, what do you really want the Chamber Tourism Department to do for Clear Creek Golf Course, so that's money we're giving them, so now you tell us what you want them to do, so it drives your business, or your revenues up, right? So look at what they did last year, you know, look at what's been done, are you happy with that? Or is there other things they can do? How about promoting tournaments, how about, you know, doing things that gets more people in here, like during maybe Rhythm and Roots, or whatever? So you should, you know, you should work with the city manager, y'all should have the authority to do that, and play the game of, here's what we want to advertise that golf course, so you do get it in the black, and stay in the black, and it's going in this direction.
Our biggest problem right now is that we have all those lots available, that aren't being sold, people don't know that they're even there, available for sale.
And we're gonna talk about that, that's one...
That's a huge revenue.
That's on councils of the past.
That's a huge revenue that we're missing out on.
And I am making a comeback, Mr. Barnes, I'm planning a tournament up there within the next month and a half, I think, and I'm actually scared, I don't tell anybody where I'm gonna be in open spaces, too much in advance, but, you know...
I'm not gonna be there when he does that, I'm not gonna be anywhere near that tee box. All right, so seriously, so think about this, so how do you promote the golf course better? How do you get more tournaments out there? So now, let's think about the city, and all the discussions we've had over the last two weeks, right? So you can, you can do fundraisers for certain organizations, and the golf tournament brings in a lot of money, right? So the police department, the fire department, the life-saving crew, any organization you can think of, right? You know, you need to work with those organizations, and think about charity tournament events, because I'll bet you there'll be a lot of people that sign up for those, and that's extra revenues that that particular department could get, to help fund some of their equipment, and assets, and expenditures that, you know, would help us out, so...
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes, I'll see you.
All right, let's go ahead and try to get through the property maintenance, and then before we take a break. Property maintenance discussion.
We had really, by property maintenance, I meant what you all had talked about before, in terms of the blighted properties, code enforcement.
Okay. So is there anything else, I guess, to be, that did come up under the discussion with the police chief? Is there anything else?
Well, I think everybody might have a different definition of what is blighted property, you know, we might need to clarify that, because in my mind, blighted property is buildings, residential buildings, that have been sitting around for decades, just deteriorating. There's never been power on them for a decade, they're just sitting there, rotting, and they're being broke into, and they're a safety issue, we need to start thinking about that, and you know who...
If they're an attractive nuisance, there might be something we can do about that, but...
Well, we need something in place that will motivate the owner to sell it, to do something with it, if they can't.
All right, there is a section in our charter that deals with blighted property, and it gives a definition, and there is a process for us to do that. The ultimate question is, is how much is city council willing to fund us to take care of these blighted properties? It does, I mean, it's not free, we have to hire people to tear it down, if there's asbestos, we have to deal with asbestos. It, I mean, in theory, you would think we could just go out there, the bulldozer bulldozed it down, and take care of it, it doesn't work that way. And in order for me to start the process on a lot of these homes, I need a budget that I can work with. I mean, I would estimate that a single-story home is three to five thousand dollars, a two-story home is roughly ten thousand dollars to tear down, and that's just to tear it down. That doesn't include if you run into a situation where you have asbestos that has to be taken care of, or other hazardous materials that would need to be disposed of. So I mean, you know, if there was a, I'm throwing a number out, I'm not saying it's a number I'm asking for, I'm not even asking for a number, because it's totally up to council's purview, but if you said, Mr. Eads, here's fifty thousand dollars this year to take care of blighted homes, that could potentially take care of seventeen single-story homes, or it might only take care of five two-story homes.
Or one.
Or one. So there has to be a decision of the, the council has to have it make a commitment that that's what they wanna do, and they're willing to expend that money in order to do it.
Wait, are you talking about a taking of private property? And tearing, I mean, you're talking, that's what you're saying?
I mean, that's exactly what the code allows.
Taking of private property, so you're gonna have to give them a hearing?
You gotta give them a hearing, right.
Which costs money to do that.
Which costs money to do that.
Okay.
I mean...
Well, that's part of the tear down.
So there is a process, and once you start this process, the homeowner has the opportunity to remedy those situations. So if they remedy it, great, if they don't, then we continue that process, and depending on how much of a fight that homeowner puts up, determines, I mean, it doesn't matter how much of a fight a homeowner puts up in court, in wanting to keep their property, because I'm getting paid the same, it doesn't cost you all anymore to pay...
Who's setting your standard, Mr. Eads, I mean, what's gonna be the standard? I mean, who's the, who is going to be the final arbiter of what's blighted or not? I mean, that's, you're getting into some real arbitrary, capricious kind of things here, sir, I'll be honest with you.
I'm not getting into anything, I'm not getting into anything to talk to you.
That's why the VML's thing said, if it doesn't have electricity and it's boarded up, then nobody's living there.
Can we let Ms. Crowder, because right now, my understanding is, we do some of this through community development block grant funding.
So I wanna reference the VML, and if I remember right, it was Norfolk was the city that had that ordinance. So when you say VML, it's really another city, I think, is what you're referencing. We do, and have in the past, torn down houses in the CDVG areas. We are no longer able to tear down as many as we have in the past, because the depart, the State Department of Community and Housing has said that, that there's a better use for that money, and so that, that's why we have not done as many lately. But again, that only covers certain areas of the city.
And I, if, if council, if you look at Code Section Fifty hyphen six fifty-nine of the city charter, it sets out the process for blight. Now, I've done research in the past, is what courts consider blight. Contrary to, it's not arbitrary and capricious to make a determination that a home is blighted, because in order for it to be arbitrary and capricious, you're basically, you're not giving them any rights that they were afforded in order to remedy the situation. We have those rights and remedies built within our code, so that a homeowner can remedy the situation. A lot of these homes, we met with our code enforcement officer last week, I shouldn't say a lot, but several homes are potentially, the homeowner deceased, they may not have relatives around here, even if we do know who the relative is, they may not care about the home, they may live in New York or California, and could care less about a home that's sitting over on Mary Street. But we still have to find those homeowners, because they own the property, even if it's been abandoned, and no one's been to it, there's still a legal owner of that property, and we have to notify them. And then if they respond, then we have to go through the proper process. If they don't respond, then we can continue on our process to remove the home. Now, when you remove the home, you've got other issues, now you've got a vacant lot. So your tax revenue's gonna be less than what it would be if you had a home sitting there. And then another issue on top of that is, some of our zoning requirements, it would be very difficult for a home to be built on some of these lots, due to our setback requirements. So there is an entire process that's gonna have to be looked at and corrected, I shouldn't say corrected, just updated, so that when you do have a small lot, that we have a lot of small lots in the city, someone can go in and build a new home, even though there are setback requirements that require a home to be from a certain property line, so we have to look at that, and I think Ms. Morgan's taking a look at that as part of her update to the zoning plan.
That's correct, and I just found the paper I was looking for, just to give you an idea of the scope. In the last ten years, since two thousand seven, the city has torn down fifty-eight homes, and we have worked with an additional sixty-four homeowners to have those homes torn down as well.
Do we have a dollar figure?
No, I don't have that with me, I can get it for you.
Yeah, just get an idea, because I've always heard a lot more money in five or ten thousand dollars.
No, that's about right, if there's no asbestos in it.
Right, well, anything built before nineteen seventy is probably gonna have asbestos.
And taking it to the dump, and taking it out too, Ms. Wingard, tearing it down, and taking it to the dump, and getting rid of it, is be, no more than ten?
Taff and fry, they'll come in, they'll do the preliminary on the asbestos and lead paint and everything else, that's usually anywhere from four to six hundred dollars, and then they'll generate a report on that, and if they find asbestos, they'll give you a quote on what it's gonna take to remove it, but if they don't find any asbestos, then it's four, five thousand dollars for a single-family home, for a single...
Turnkey jar.
Turnkey, they'll clean the lot up and haul everything off. But here's, here's what I'm gonna suggest. I'm with Mr. Mumpower on the blighted houses in the city here, but, and I apologize, because I requested this, and I have not had the time to go through the list around all the properties, but I request it.
What have you been doing?
I don't know, man, it ain't sleeping, it ain't eating, but... There is several city-owned properties, there's two two-stories on Russell Street, right now, that's boarded up, no power on, hadn't been, hadn't had power on for years and years that this city owns. We can start with our own properties. If I'm not mistaken, there's two story houses, and I apologize for not going down that list, because the gentleman that generated it, he stepped up to the plate and worked hard on that, but I do plan on getting around, and going through every property.
I think it's fine.
But if we have a, if we have a vacant house this city owns, that hadn't had utilities on it, and we can't sell it, because it's so deteriorated, no investor is willing to go in and breathe new life into it, we need to tear it down.
I agree with that, I agree with that.
So let's start at home.
And we don't have to worry about what's blighted, we own it, we can call what we want to be blighted, right?
But at this point in time, there's no money allocated for it.
There's no mon, there's no money, there's no line item for that. So if we just started out with fifteen thousand dollars this year, that would allow us to look at one home this year, and then get our heads wrapped around it, how far do we wanna go with this?
You're talking about urban renewal, you're talking about the city basically getting an urban renewal business.
Yeah, we use a lot of the federal grant money for that, and firstly, said you can do whatever you want to with it, but then when we started doing too many tear downs, they said, oh, no, you can't do any more of those.
So could we use a small amount, like Mr. Wingard's saying, a CDVG, or is that completely, could that be an improper allocation of those funds?
We squeeze out fifteen grand without tipping the scales over?
I'll have, I'll have to get back to you, and again, it depends, you know, Russell, the house on Russell Street.
I believe there's two houses city-owned on Russell Street.
Should be in the CDVG area, but I don't know if we could do them both.
You won't be able to do them both on fifteen.
I'll have to check.
That's a two-story.
They're two stories.
I mean, if we, if we can use a small amount of CDVG, because that, again, if we can, that traditionally is... The part, that's been the problem, is there's, they've used that as the only funding source, and it's such a small amount of money that you can use, even, even the allocation itself, it's not a huge amount from HUD, and it's gotta go to so many different things in certain neighborhoods. But, yeah, I mean, I'd agree, blight's a problem, I can tell you two or three places that are set vacant for years, that I see on a daily basis, within walking distance of my house. So, I mean, that, the problem, though, is gonna be that, and I think that's what, is going through that process of zoning, and kinda updating some of that in the process, and then when you identify these properties, what takes priority, I can, you know, is it, like I say, I can think of one property that caught on fire, and is just sitting there, and I mean, it's been that way for two or three years.
Well, I think there's also a possibility of offering incentives to builders, say, hey, give you a deal on this, maybe waive taxes for a couple of years, or whatever.
What you gotta realize, too, is, all because we declare a property blighted, doesn't mean it's automatically ours. We're just...
Well, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We're talking our stuff right now.
Yeah, I mean, okay, that's, yeah, that's a different story.
And that's a good idea, why don't we just give it to somebody?
Well, give an incentive to say, tear it down, build a house on it?
Well, that's the problem, we run into issues with our zoning ordinance.
I understand, I'm not saying if it can't be done, then we don't, there's no point in offering an incentive.
What I was gonna say is, you know, tearing it down's only one approach, right? So there are some communities that own a property that's been condemned, and they go out and they basically auction it off, and these contractors that do a refurb of a old house will come and look at it, and say, okay, I can, I can refurb this for maybe twenty-five grand, and turn it over, and sell it for forty-five, so, so there'll be three or four of them show up, and they, it's public auction, it's as-is, they buy it, and then they have to come in with their vehicle, they have to jack it up, they put it on the thing, and they take it off. That's part of the, you know, part of the deal, and then, so that's an approach, you know, you don't have to necessarily tear it down. And, you know, there's actually a TV show that they do that, but there's communities that do that, and there's business people out there that actually will take it, and take it to some vacant yard, and, you know, tear the roof off it, tear the inside, redo it, paint it, and then resell it.
For tonight, for tonight, I would say that we should assume there's no CDVG money available to tear down city structures. Mr. Poe has, I think, has brought that point up, and I do think that is a good possibility, that we aren't allowed to use it on our own property. Also, in terms, you know, it's very common, it's very common in some larger localities to have a tax credit for this zones, for this kind of work. I know Ronup has something downtown, if you come in and refurbish a building, they give you a ten-year tax break, and it, the break goes down over time, you know, those are certainly things we can look at. I'm not sure if we could just identify our properties to do that, I think it has to be, you know...
I think that's a, so I guess, unless somebody wants to add money to the budget, it sounds like some of this needs to come through planning and zoning, and look at some of those...
We're already talking about it, I'm on the planning commission.
But look at some of these kind of ways, and the tax credit incentives as well, you know, I think, different strategies that we can do, because, I mean, it is, I think everybody would agree, and it's, it's an issue that, you know, it's not gonna go away, something needs to be done.
Well, I'm preaching, I'm preaching to the choir, but we've talked about, we've talked about crime, and we've talked about blighted property, if we have jobs, sorry, Mr. Flynn, but if we have jobs, a lot of these problems take care of themselves, and I'll shut up.
Okay, absolutely, can we take a break?
Uh, yeah, we'll go ahead.
Have a twelve-hour break.
Take a recess. All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting back to order. I have number four on the agenda, employment vacancy discussion, and I don't know who wanted, I forget who had asked that this be talked about.
This is me, and me to start, and then you all. So tonight, in front of your seats, you had a revised budget, incorporating the changes we talked about the other night, let me be clear, I just wanna go through what they are. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped ahead to other discussion. Employment vacancies, in front of your chair, you have a sheet of the vacancies currently in the city, that's right here in front of you, okay. We have included those we know have already tendered written notification, or intent to retire, and we have included all positions that run through the city's payroll. You have already talked about the police department vacancies, the drug court vacancies... The drug court vacancy is a grant-funded position. The fire department has the two vacancies at this time. The sheriff's department, I hope, we included those, but again, those are comp board-funded positions. Street and engineering has one vacancy, and that is VDOT maintenance-funded. Refuge collection, we had a driver retire in May. Solid waste disposal, I told you, the disposal manager has left us in addition. We had a equipment operator retire. And then we have an environmental technician, one position, that we have been filling presently with a at-work employee. Parks and Rec, we have the one position. Community development, you all are aware certainly that the director position's open. City Transit had a driver quit in the last couple of weeks. And then engineering has an engineering position vacant. So that's a summary. It does not include social services or the library.
Any questions?
Yeah, so what's the bottom line on the amount of dollars this represents for all these positions?
Well, all of these, which, I mean, in fairness, I probably should have pulled out the sheriff's department, as well as the grant-funded. It's around nine hundred thousand dollars for the salary, and around one point two million with the benefits.
Around what, again?
It's around nine hundred thousand for the salary and one point two for the benefits, but that's for all twenty-two positions. And that is an estimate. We just did an estimate.
How many of these positions are in the current budget?
They all are.
Okay.
And how many of these deputies are state-funded?
They all, by the comp board, they're all required.
They're all required.
And I have a letter from them that says we, from the comp board, that says we do not have a choice but to fund them.
That's basically, we pay all the fringe. Is that how it works?
We don't pay all, but a majority.
Majority of the fringe, and they pay the salary.
And we've done agreed to hire in two more police officers.
We're leaving what's in there, Ian's what you agreed, and put a freeze on.
This is five police officers. I think earlier we talked, four was the opening. Is this one right?
One is an evidence custodian that's not a sworn officer. But I would say that the lawyers would say we have to have that.
Make handling all those cases just like that, no evidence or honor.
Make the attorneys do it.
The environmental technician. I'd clear up the backlog of cases quickly.
Okay, so we got two officers that we're adding.
The environmental technician, he retired? Is that what you said?
No, the MEO one retired.
And, okay, the environmental technician, what's that?
It's a person down in the landfill who inspects the waste as it's dumped.
And what happened to the one we previously had?
They quit.
They quit?
Mm-hmm. And so right now, we filled it with an at-work employee. So I'm sorry, not a contract part-time, or a contract, not part-time, a contract employee.
And they inspect the debris coming in?
Correct. We have to do, I mean, we have to do that per DEQ.
When, where do they inspect it at? I mean, everybody comes up to the building and just dumps on the floor and pulls off.
No, mm-mm, no. I mean, we let the smaller vehicles do that, yes. But the majority of waste comes in directly to the bottom.
So it's, they, if it comes straight to the bottom, then they inspect it at the bottom?
Yes.
Okay. Gosh, that's gotta be fun. Something I'd like to do on the weekends. Jeez.
So you're saying the solid waste disposal is, those have to be, feel necessary to maintain permit and operations?
Yes, I'm saying I could remove the environmental tech one and make it a contract position, but the positions have to be filled.
But you'd pay more for the contract position, you think, and then salary plus?
I think in this case I would, because it's not able to be part-time, and so we pay the fee. We're not losing the benefits in this case as well.
Yeah, I'm gonna say that it might be a savings if you're not figuring out kinda fringe versus what the contract would be, but, I mean, that's obviously something that you can look at, make a determination.
And then the engineer, did we have one quit?
We did.
How many do we, how many engineers do we have?
We have one, if you don't count me, since I really don't have much time to do it.
That guy back there.
This position is funded primarily, the engineer position's funded primarily through maintenance money and capital money. You know, we've told you all before that we bill for the time we spend, and so when we created this position, it was to assist with those projects, and so we were doing a fifty-fifty split on that and not using local money.
Okay, and then the transit driver, is that a new position or?
No, it's a lady quit.
Well, that was gonna be my question. We were looking at all the transit routes, and some have the positive transportation volume to make sense to keep, and some are really lightly used. Does this take that into account?
He, remember, he redid the routes. There was a public hearing, we just implemented those in. If we don't replace this position, we're gonna have to do overtime, and we did that last year to see, and what we found was it was better to hire the driver than pay the overtime because of the hours worked.
Are the drivers hourly? What do they?
Well, they overlap was the problem. It was hard to get enough.
No, are they paid as an hourly person? Or is it an hourly position, or is it salary? What?
Is the driver hourly or salary?
Probably hourly. I would say it's an hourly position, but I would go there. I would say it wouldn't be.
Your microphone, I'm sorry.
Even though they're paid salary, I would think it is an hourly position, what I would consider an hourly.
They're scheduled for forty hours, though.
And then the park technician, quit, retire?
Did he quit? So we had somebody quit or retire? Somebody retired and somebody got promoted.
And that was one we were gonna leave open, wasn't it? Wasn't that the recommendation of the department? I remember a park technician or something, we said we could cut that back by one, if I remember right. Or am I dreaming?
He had, he did. Did we cut one? No, you're saying we didn't? Okay.
What's the duties of that position?
Come to the, come to the mic.
We cut three contract employee positions last year, and forty thousand dollars out of this year's budget for contract employees, which is ultimately two more. This park technician would, they mow grass and they take care of Sugar Hollow Park. Right now, we're shorthanded up there and using contract employees for them.
Okay, do you think that position could be filled through at-work through the summer?
Actually, we've got two positions filled with at-work. It's not a summer job, it's a full-time position. We intend to fill at least one position with that work through street maintenance to help the mulching, the care of the falls area and the exit seven widening area.
So what's a park technician do, again?
Basically works in Sugar Hollow Park.
Doing what?
Well, they take care of the ball fields, they mow the grass, they take care of the soccer fields, the picnic areas, campgrounds, all the facilities in there.
They're general labor?
Yes.
You just gotta fancy name with it.
That, pretty much, yes. General labor.
And how many of those positions do you have that you, when they're all filled?
I don't have that in front of me.
Well, general labor shouldn't be much. I mean, real estate's ten, twelve dollars a pound.
I think we need to contract that position out.
I think so, too.
Not put that on payroll with benefits.
He has four when they're filled. Four. You asked how many?
Yeah, four when they're filled, so there's three now, and this isn't open.
Correct.
Any other questions?
Anything else?
No, I mean, all the deputies are mandated, and, you know, the street engineering's labor. What, now, is that, them job duties consist of?
The, that, I'll let, don't walk away yet, you're too... I'll let Mr. Maine tell you what they consist of. I will tell you that's funded with VDOT maintenance money. So it's the people who are out working on the sidewalks.
You're talking about the bridge?
VDOT maintenance. VDOT, there's a laborer open in VDOT maintenance, I mean, in streets, yes.
Basically, what you see every day, the building sidewalks, it's not unskilled labor, it's, our guys are pretty skilled. Pour concrete, place asphalt, takes a certain amount of carpentry skills.
And VDOT pays for it, right?
Yes.
We use the money, right.
Yeah, okay, so that's, uh, fine.
What I'm coming up with, there's only five of them that we even have any room to work with.
Well, this doesn't show the people that we've dropped in the last two years.
Yeah, I know.
This is just what is open right now, right?
Yeah, what's being proposed, yeah. But the two, the other two police officers, we've got on pause.
Right.
And then we've got a firefighter, two fire positions, so. What's everybody seeing?
Same thing you're seeing.
Same thing?
Mm-hmm.
All right. All right, so move on. All right, move on to item number five, other discussion.
So can I, can I just go real quick where I started before? I apologize to you for jumping ahead. Tonight, we placed before your draft budget. I wanna tell you what we've incorporated since the last budget you got on Tuesday. We did reduce the IDA transfer to only reflect audit fees. We've taken out the thirty thousand dollars for the passenger rail. We have reduced the school trans, or let me, sorry. We have reduced the outside agency expenditures that we discussed, so you can look at those. But basically, CVB went to seventy-five thousand, BCM, that hundred thousand went to twenty-five, and we did put the chamber dues in at the correct amount, correct amount of four thousand four hundred and fifty-seven, and then everything else was pretty much the road out. The police vehicles were moved from capital to general fund leases. We removed the funding for the downtown tree replacement. We have added two hundred and forty thousand expenditure for the solid waste liner accrual. And we have adjusted the treasurer's budget by eight thousand dollars on the revenue and expense side for interest earned and bank fees. That was something the treasurer brought to my attention. True hotel revenue and expenditures have been removed. And on the school side, the transfer was reduced by seventy-five thousand. And we have also ta, we have taken the school sales tax out of the general fund budget of revenue, and we have reduced the local transfer by that amount as well, and we've done that to avoid confusion, and that, as that money comes in, it can be distributed directly to the school and not run through the general fund. And so that's a wash there, but it brings the total number down.
Yeah, I think we've had some revisions on the outside agencies.
Real quick, last thing I'll say, and then I'll let you go.
Okay.
Is, you know, as it stands right now, if you all flip to the last page of the green, you'll see we still have that bottom line number for the out-of-balance, and that is page thirty-five. And it's a positive right now of a hundred and sixty-six thousand six hundred and sixteen. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think we've had a change of heart on the Chamber Convention Visitors Bureau to a hundred thousand from seventy-five, if I'm not mistaken. Theory being, it's not a really good time to cut back on marketing, and we're certainly gonna not only watch this agency, but all outside agencies next year, and see if we're getting bang for our buck.
Yeah, and I know, Ms. Reinhardt, you're here, and I know it's tough for your organization and everything, but somehow, some way, I hope we can track what y'all are doing, and we're, you know, and I know it's tough and so forth and so on. I wish there was some way, though, this year, that next year, there can be some empirical, more empirical data as it pertains to the local and so forth, just the national stuff. And I don't know how you necessarily do that, but I appreciate it, and the time down for the main event, it's down now to two weeks to get something down at Speedway, so just reminding you of that, too, but can you try to help us next year with that, please, ma'am?
So we have.
Is that a, yes, is that a? Oh, I know, I'm talking about as far as giving us some empirical data on how we're, how this money is translating into business and so forth, local stuff, if we can. Yes, ma'am, please.
Just to make sure I understood, you're saying a hundred thousand now, and supposed to be seventy-five?
If we got three people agreeable to it, I'm one, Doug's one, anybody else? Mr. Hubbard did this one.
Let's hear Ms. Reinhardt for a second.
Well, and with all due respect, I personally feel like we provide very hard data numbers and return on investment to you all. We use the industry standards, we've done them backwards like Ask. The best tell of your return on what the CVB and tourism folks do is watching your lodging taxes. And if you look at the lodging taxes over the number of years, they have been increasing, and that's the number-one telltale sign if your tourism and marketing is actually working. But I will caution that this past year with the battle at Bristol, there may be an upblip that may not be recoverable this year, because you had an extraordinary event that would create that, that you're not gonna have every single year. But, again, we appreciate the support, but I would like to say that we do provide numerous opportunities and provide as much data to you all as possible. If there's some other way we can do it, we're glad to do it, but we do it every way known to man in the tourism industry and marketing world to do that.
Well, I mean, I'd say, you know, in any business, it's hard, it's hard to get your arms around some of the intangibles, right? When you're, when you're trying to advertise and market your business or whatever, so one way to do it, as you say, the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of last year, here's the way it was spent. We spent so much here to bring people into the city for this event. We spent this here, we had to update the website, we added this, you know, capability, and that's where your money went. So one of the things we said was, we need to kinda get a better picture of where our money's going, you know, where we're actually earmarking it, and we even talked about, I think, if we give whatever amount, you know, it's kinda earmarking. even talked about, I think, if we give whatever amount, you know, it's, it's kinda earmarked to say, come back and tell us where it goes, you know, we kinda wanna know where our money's going, so to speak, if you can do that.
We can show you exactly where...
This budget's wrong.
Where every dollar goes.
Yeah, there's a problem, no, there's a problem with this budget, I see already, it's not regarding Ms. Reinhardt.
You know, let's, let's finish this discussion, I got you. So, um, so then, I think people are confused, and I wanna give you a chance, the lodging tax, right? So the state of Virginia allows municipalities, right, to charge a certain lodging tax.
Correct.
And you have to take a certain portion of that, but that percent that you take out of that lodging tax to go back to the visitor bureau for marketing is not defined.
That's correct.
It could be a half a percent, it could be fifty percent, it could be a hundred percent, so it's really left up to the council to decide what they think is the right number of a percent of that lodging tax to put back into advertising and so forth, so... So most companies, so one way to look at it, and here's where I was going with that, is when you, when you apply advertising and marketing fees of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, that's a certain percent of the top line.
Correct.
Right, so you look at what top line revenues you impacted and what percent you applied to impact that, so if you did the Battle of Bristol, if you did whatever, and revenues jumped up when you did that advertising campaign, and we see that because we track revenues month to month, you know, and you could back in and analyze that, that's what we're kinda after, right? To say, are we spending...
It's very difficult to show.
Stay with me, so we're saying, do, are we spending five percent advertising and marketing to get back, you know, another half a million dollars in lodging tax, or are we spending a hundred and seventy-five thousand in advertising to get back five million, you know, in, in incremental lodging tax revenues? That's the picture we can't get our mind around, you can't get your mind around that number when you look at, you know, but businesses, uh, do that, 'cause they'll go out and they'll advertise for a particular event, and there'll be an advertising blitz, and they know they spent ten or fifteen thousand dollars, and then they watch, you know, if, if their revenues upticked after they did that, and if they didn't, then that didn't do anything, it flatlined, that's what we're saying, it's hard for us to see that cause and effect, and we, we need to figure out how to do that, 'cause that, you, you may be bringing way more value than we know, but we're not able to, we're not able to see it right, you know what I'm saying, and, and I've met with you guys, and I've looked at the website, and I think, you know, you're doing a good job with, with tools you got, you got the right skill sets, but if you could be more creative about what you can do to advertise this city and figure out a way to get our mind around what the cause and effect is, it's gonna help us all out long-term, right, it'll, it'll better define how much money we should spend on that stuff, 'cause, you know, you, you could surprise yourself, really, you might, you might say you need two hundred, you might say you need two hundred and fifty thousand dollars going to the visitor bureau, only if you do certain things like, you know, this website type advertising, or, or doing an application, right, give you, give you fifty grand to put a Bristol, Virginia application that's out there, so when somebody hits exit ten, it automatically starts coming up, and then they know to stop and pull off, that, you know, that kinda stuff is what we're talking about to drive, to really drive focused revenues, right?
And those things take much more money than we have to spend right now, I mean, we have, I mean...
Yeah, 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 but we need to know what that money is, right, what that number is, 'cause it may be worth, as we go forward, it may be worth spending, but that's all I'm saying.
Again.
I was gonna say, I would say that you get the value residually, that, that, you know, the advertising, it's not like you're saying, come by car, you know, this month, you're, you're saying, come to Bristol, somebody may come during the summer, they may come during the fall, but part of what they're doing is, is building that awareness and the, and the brand of come to Bristol, and so you may see some of this, like I say, around special events like the Battle of Bristol, which is probably why I think that's going down a little bit, is it incorporated a bump last year, maybe built that in, but the trend overall is that it's going up, and, uh, you know, to me, uh, where we're, we're seeing declining revenues, this is one thing that, that does generate revenue, so, uh, I think it's, that we should, I mean, I would, I would say leave it whole, but I know I'm alone, but I would also say, you know, we've got three new hotels coming within the next twelve to, to twenty-four months probably, so, uh, two downtown and one at, at the Falls, so, you know, again, we're gonna have the opportunity to capture those visitors if they know what's going on here in Bristol, and, you know, now's the time to be advertising to them. I think, cutting this, you may not see it right away, but, uh, over time, you'll, you'll see a, a decline.
And I think that's the unfortunate part, is that you may cut tourism this year, you may not see it next year, but you will see it in the residual years beyond that, and to recover from that is much more difficult than just plugging it back the next year. Um, and that's also understanding that there are financial, financial challenges of the city, we do respect and appreciate that. I, I, on the taxes, back to your point, Mr. Rum Power, on, on these lodging taxes, when you make a choice as a locality to implement those taxes, it does say that those, a portion of those are to go, and it does not clarify exactly how much, um, is to go back. We do receive the lowest amount of anyone in our comparison, uh, data, and have for some time, but more importantly, to understand that those dollars are paid by people who come here and stay in a hotel, it's not those of us that live here in this community that are paying those taxes and then they're going back to the CBB. Those, that additional nine percent tax that comes through the lodging, um, revenue is by people who come here to visit or pass through or stay or, um, you know, come to events, those are paid directly by people who stay in hotels, so I, I think that's a very, again, that clear link between people who are coming and staying here and seeing that rise over the years.
Yeah, and in the same breath, and I'll tell you, 'cause I travel a lot, and, and I could tell you, people that are in our business that travel a lot, you know, you don't, you, you don't typically decide to stay at hotel one or hotel two because the Chamber of Commerce or the visitor bureau is putting something on their website, you know, you know, you, 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 there's other clear methods, so if you've got those metrics that business people travel by, that's what's, that's what's driving them to the hotel off exit five or downtown, right, and so you need to kinda understand that, 'cause it's, it's probably different than what you would think about. Um, so, so I'm, it's not clear of whether the money that we're given is being targeted to drive those business people to those hotels here versus somewhere else, uh, 'cause we've, we've just not seen that kinda information.
Did you provide a breakdown between business and leisure, or do you, I, I doubt you even have that, but it seems to me that a lot of what the, the CBB would focus on would be more of a leisure travel segment, people that have, uh, disposable income that, you know, are looking for somewhere to go, and that's where, you know, business is not necessarily gonna go to the, to the Chamber of Commerce to decide whether to come to Bristol, they're gonna say, we're sending you there, and, and somebody will figure out the hotel, you might go there to figure out which restaurant to eat, it's more about coming to a region, uh, either Bristol for an event like the race or the festival, or to the region even, and say you were gonna go up on White Top Mountain, and you decided, you looked at the map and said, well, Bristol's where the interstate is, I can drive up there, that's where the hotels and the restaurants are, so that's where I'll stay, even if you spent the day, uh, along the Creek River Trail or something like that, so I think that's where y'all provide more of that than, than a business segment, if I, if I understand...
It's probably more, yes, and we do, um, I'll give you an example, when a business decides to locate here, very often, they do just walk into the Chamber of Commerce, and we have worked with countless numbers of those businesses who may be wanting to start here, but the building's not built yet, but they need to establish their business. We work with those people sometimes before a ground is ever broken, and we set them up in temporary office space, we help them find everything that they need from lodging to temporary business office space, until that business opens its doors and starts, um, selling its product, so we're often very on the front end of that piece of it, but we do have a tremendous amount of the leisure travelers and, um, the festival goers, the race fans, they go on down the line, and, you know, that, that formula is way more complex than putting, putting something on a website, I mean, we have, um, and I wish Matt were here tonight, I apologize, he's not, but he's at a funeral and could not be here, um, there is a long list of very creative ways that you market, um, communities, and, and Matt, again, has been doing this for almost twenty years, and has the respect of, uh, most people in that industry, not just here in the Commonwealth of Virginia and the state of Tennessee, but across the country, uh, in that industry, so he is working, um, I assure you tirelessly, uh, we are, um, a staff that, that always looks for different and new ways to do things, so...
Well, you were one of the only few that got funded at all, uh, your organization, I want you to understand that, and, um, you know, it's not what I know you would like to have, but, you know, as entrepreneurish as you are and so forth, and your staff is, I'm sure you can make that work, uh, and so forth, um, you know, I commend, like I said, I commend you all for your organization, for your efforts, uh, Mr. Hubbard twisted an arm.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard.
He did, and, um, and everything.
I told him I knew where he lived.
He knows where I live, he knows where I live, but, uh, and it also makes sense, because, you know, it is feeling a role that someone in Bristol, Virginia, and maybe someone in Bristol, Tennessee would have to feel if we didn't do this, perhaps two or three roles, so, um, you know, but we've got other things to get into here, I think, so I appreciate you.
And we'll be glad, I'd be glad to bring the breakdown as well, so...
Thank you so much.
So we wanna run through all these optionals, make sure we're all on the same page?
Yeah, let's get, take care of it.
Okay, the Southwest Virginia Emergency Medical, twenty-four fifty, that one was left in place. The Chambers, uh, Convention Visitors, we agreed on a hundred thousand, at least three of us had.
I think, I think I have, I have, I'll go with that.
Okay.
Can you, can you pause one second?
Okay. All right, second's up.
Uh-huh, okay, thirty seconds.
All right, apparently there's...
We thought we cut the Southwest Virginia...
The emergency med?
Yeah, that, that looks like it might have been cut, so we wanna...
That's just cut.
Yeah. So the only thing, the, the only thing that's still on the table to fund is the Chamber, and then Keep Bristol Beautiful.
That's it, and if Bristol, Keep Bristol Beautiful is the pass-through, right? Is the word they use?
That's correct.
All right, then we wanna go to, uh, well, that's in the next section, the country music, to complete our five hundred thousand dollar pledge, we need to give them fifty grand this year.
Twenty-five and twenty-five. You've got twenty-five on here.
Yeah, it just goes to fifty.
Okay, okay, and that's, and that letter needs to be sent with a check, don't come back asking for no more, no more?
Well, we, we, you can ask, everybody, we still want everybody to ask, it's gotta justify, but yeah, right, all right.
So, is that, I mean, so you're saying a majority of you all agree to this, or this is you speaking?
No, I think that we got three votes, unless, I got Doug's mind.
I'm gonna see where you're going before you get my vote, on everything, that's okay?
The hundred grand, we'll count that.
Right now, right now, I'm with you.
All right, I've got, is, we have a third.
The hundred's going to fifty.
For CBB, you're saying?
For the...
Well, we're doing one at a time, a hundred grand for the Chamber and Visitor Bureau, and then...
So you're going back to page one.
But I'm, 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 my vote's contingent on, I want you to understand, this is a package thing, from my perspective.
Right, this is the last time.
If it goes some other way, then my, it's off the table.
Right, so for now?
For now, for now.
Okay, so we got the hundred, uh, the next item, council's gonna pay for the Fourth of July out of our own pocket.
Yes, we are.
This year.
This year only.
'Cause I never know where I'll be next year.
Well, if you, if you, if you get five hundred out of me and you, we might not be here next year.
All right, of course, the pass-through, so we're still zero on all the other stuff, and then Chan, uh, Bristol Country Music, fifty, you got three votes on that?
Right now.
Yeah.
I, I would, again, Jay, I mean, like I say, to me, I think the CBB, I'm glad we, you agreed to up that, but I think there should be more, because I do think that helps generate revenue.
Well, I understand what you're wanting, but I don't think you got three votes.
I know, but I'm just, I'm saying this...
You don't have, you don't have three on that.
If we don't get three votes on the hundred, we won't even do that.
Keep pushing that crap.
Well...
I understand, I, I think it's legitimate.
I understand that I'm in the minority here, I'm, I'm just saying, this is what I think. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna...
You said it the other night.
Well, I'm gonna say it again tonight, I mean, I, you know, uh... Yeah, just let me say it, get it out there on the record, I mean, I, like I say, I understand that, but I, and I also think the Country Music Association, that, that money was given contingent to raise an additional amount from the city of Bristol and the state of Tennessee, and they both fulfilled their pledge, I think we should fulfill that pledge, 'cause if they had five hundred thousand when they gave that, they would've, but they spread it out over time, and that, I mean, I think that's more, uh, to me, a moral obligation, but, I may, again, I may be in the minority there, so...
Well, I, I agree, it's, that's why I went to fifty, because we gave them fifty, they didn't ask for it back in twelve, or fourteen it was, and so this fifty and that fifty is a hundred, we've already paid four hundred, so that's the five hundred thousand obligation, and they certainly need it, so, I mean, that if needed, is taken care of because they didn't get that grant.
That was to buy an extra building, no?
Well, it's to help fix it up, but I mean, that's what they're using this money for.
So you're very, so you're very sure and clear that that fifty satisfies that entire five hundred thousand dollar commitment?
If my math holds up, they gave them fifty they didn't ask for out of the chute.
You said if, I said, are you very clear?
They gave them...
I'm, I'm clear, my math, I don't know if somebody else, but fifty, fifty's a hundred and we've already paid for it.
Well, and the same council that did that, gave them the fifty without asking, the, the, one of the people, council came to BBU and said it's gonna be for educational training for kids on how to play musical instruments, they got, they blew, that was back when BBU was an open sea of money, and they got thirty-five K there, so, you know, I think Bristol Country Music Museum's depleted all the taxpayer, ratepayer goodwill that they could possibly get, period, that's my opinion.
Well, I'm, I'm not interested in what they spent it on, that's their job, but our job's to honor a commitment, and it was five hundred thousand dollars. And they gave them fifty before that even took effect, and then the next five years, we're gonna pay a hundred grand a year, this year's the final year, I'm saying fifty, that gives the five hundred thousand dollar pledge the legitimacy. I don't wanna start, if a council makes a pledge, whether I like it or not, I wanna honor it, I don't wanna start where it says, if we tell you we're gonna do something next year, and we got a new council, and they say, forget it, we're not doing it, we're setting a horrible precedent.
Well, party on, BCM.
Well, that's where councils should not make a promise they can't fulfill and stretch things out.
I agree with you a hundred percent, but I, I couldn't control that council, I wasn't on it, but I don't wanna set a precedent on this council if at all possible, that's my reason for...
The email we, we received today, they send a invoice for a hundred thousand dollars back in March that is scheduled to be the check written out this week on the twentieth?
Yeah, it could be intercepted.
It's fifty.
That's where the year we're in now.
Yeah, that's for the current year.
That's not for the new year.
Oh, I know that.
Yeah, yeah.
But they've invoiced us a hundred thousand, the CFO has to write a check for, or whoever writes the check.
Right.
'Cause we've been invoiced.
That's, that's... That was in this year's budget.
Yeah, I know.
They can't even follow down, even the council resolution, they just invoice us, they don't have to even show any need, so, you know, that's, in fact, that's actually rude, that's very unprofessional and rude, okay? So, that's another case in point, I, well, like I said, let's go all the way down the line, and we'll see where the votes are on this, but right now, I'm with you, but keep pushing the buttons and you, you won't get that.
So we have a third vote for a hundred, because there won't be one for a hundred and seventy-five.
I'm taking the same stance I took the other night, we're not, I'm not gonna devastate lives, laying people off and give money away, that's what you're doing, that's what we're doing.
But, I mean, I...
I'm, I'm, unfortunately, that's gonna happen, no matter what we do here.
Well, no, not necessarily, I mean, realistically, if, if we decide to just throw it out here, and don't give them anything.
With this budget cut, we, y'all, we have to, we have to table this till next year and just postpone that payout, but as long as we're in a cutting cycle, laying off people, devastating families, we should not be giving money away.
And I'll tell you one thing, that former council, that we wanna honor what they did, go back and look at who they were, think about it, they sure didn't honor this, the citizens that they were put on here to represent, not one time, that's why we're having to cut, so let's, let's get to the big boy, and let's see where we are on the big boy, and then we'll come back to it, 'cause there's no use putting, just, just cut this little, this chunk change out, let's... just chump change out. Let's go to the real thing and come back.
All right. But we'll come back to this before the night's over. We'll go on to the other discussion section.
The fire department cuts.
Well, we're still in other discussions.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I guess.
All right, yeah, we are.
This is open for you all.
The other discussion, so. It's fire.
Fire departments, the discussion.
Yes, sir. Fire departments, the discussion. We've heard.
Put up three scenarios, and thirty-three is the.
Mr. Hubbard suggested we go down to thirty-three. I will go along with thirty, down to thirty-three employees. I will go with that. I won't go any more, and I won't, and I would consider less, but I'll, at a minimum, thirty-three.
And two things convinced me, and that's looking over Mr. Mumpower's numbers. There weren't so many caveats in that area, whereas with police, it's all over the board. You've got one side says, oh, you, that you need this many, but then you can't count, there's just too many variables. This is more straightforward. Bristol, Tennessee only had two fire stations with twenty-six thousand people. So, I think Bristol, Virginia, we're quite a bit smaller in not only population, but in land area. They only had two.
They've got five.
Well.
They're building the fifth one now.
They're building the fifth one now.
So, I mean, they had four.
Yeah.
Now, we're talking also, we're talking about closing the fire station in addition to that. Is that correct, the main fire station?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, otherwise, you, you water down every station. You couldn't do that, you had to close one.
I, I'm with that. That's where I'm at. For all the reasons you stated, all the reasons Mr. Mumpower articulated the other night, period.
And I absolutely hate it with a passion. It makes me sick. This whole process, I hate it. That's all I can say. But, no matter how much personally I don't like doing any of this, I'm serving the city, I'm not serving Archie Hubbard. And, so I, I think with the falls, in other words, we're, we got no problems with our budget balancing. That's not the issue. We're looking at twenty-twenty, and when fifty million dollars pops up on the table, they say, pay me. I understand we can long-term bond, that's great, we're still looking at three and a half million dollar payments a year that we're not paying right now, and we can't afford to add that just out of the blue. So, if the falls, there's another big if. We've had promises for at least the two years I've been on council, that we're just about ready to sign a bunch up. We hear it for a year and a half, fine. If it happens, thank God. If it doesn't happen, we better have some money in the bank.
Absolutely.
To cover our butts when they say, pay us. And we're only looking at three years, and so we're not going to be this deep in money, even with the cuts we're proposing. So, I hate it with a passion, but I also feel it's my duty to have money to make debt payments, that we have absolutely zero in the bank for right now. And if the falls is successful, it'll pay for all that stuff and the pressure's off. And if it don't, we've got to be ready.
Yep.
That's it.
With this, living on a promise is going to kill us. We've got to get ready.
I, I just, I don't see no other viable option.
And with the numbers and stats that Mr. Mumpower came with the other night, it's a big eye-opener. And we've been paying for decades for all these firemen. And nobody wants to see them lose their job, nobody. But we got to be physically responsible to this city.
I can understand the reasons for wanting to put the money in the reserve, and, and why I cannot go along, again, I'm going to be out by myself on this, and I realized that the other night. I, I do applaud the fact that y'all are putting this into reserve. I mean, that's where it needs to go. Although, I don't know that you need to put that much right now in any department, whether it be fire or parks and rec. If you cut, cut it by a third, you're going to see a dramatic decrease in service. And of all the departments to see that in, I, to me, the police and fire, that big a cut, that much, I mean, it's going, I'm afraid it's going to have a detrimental impact. I mean, not only on their service, but then, you know, on just all kinds of other impacts. I mean, we're sitting here talking about employees, and, and, you know, again, you're never going to be able, if you cut too much, and you, you're never going to be able to find people that would come back and, and work, I don't think. I mean, I think you're talking about economic development, and if somebody wants to come in here and bring a business or move to Bristol, and they Google Bristol, and they look, and what do they see? You know, drastic cuts to, to particularly fire. I mean, I, I don't think that's setting the tone, and I, and I guess my point is, I don't think we have to go that deep.
And, and I respect that, but we're talking about the national average that Mr. Hump, Mumpower showed was an average we should have twenty-eight. We are going above that with thirty-three.
And that leaves the two remaining stations manned as usual.
That's still two stations, and the one we're talking about closing is one point one mile from its front door to the front door of the Euclid, because I set my truck and rode it to see how long it would take me to get there and how far it was. It was one point one mile, and with, I'm thinking it was four or five stop signs and three red lights. It took me four minutes and five seconds. Now, if I had a siren on, two minutes. How long would it take me?
Well, also, we have to keep in mind that we have agreements with Bristol, Tennessee to help us out, and we help them out, depending on where the fire is. So, it's not like if something happened downtown, there'd be no fire station to come to the rescue, Bristol, Tennessee would show up. And we'd show up, and we'd probably get there at the same time. But I mean, they may get there first, but whatever, we've got an agreement, and they'll help us out, we help them out, and that's, and that's what it's always been. So, I mean, it's not like we're going to leave a section of town totally void of fire protection. It's going to be there. It may be Bristol, Tennessee that gets there first by a minute or two, which makes a lot of difference, I agree. But it's not going to be left unprotected. The wings of their town are going to have the same crew they always had, so there's no difference there. So, I don't see a safety issue.
Neither do I. Unless I'm just flat out missing it, I don't see any change in response time. And if there is, there's something going on, and we're going to have to investigate that. Because you can't have a fires, two fire stations within one point one mile away from each other, and there'd be five minutes to eight minutes, from what I'm hearing, and response time difference. So, and they're one point one mile away, and I can drive it, obeying the law, stopping at every sign and every red light, and be there in four minutes and five seconds. You can't tell me it's going to take you five to eight minutes of extra time to do a call. It's not possible. If it is, it's been done deliberately, and that's negligence.
Yes, thank you, sir. I agree with you one hundred percent, Mr. Wingard. One hundred percent.
All right, so we got.
Yeah, I got, I got some comments. I mean, I'm taking, I'm taking a lot of heat for this, because I, I was researching the information to try to understand.
Yeah.
You know, because I, you know, I wanted to see, and I would have done this, no matter who the company or organization was, to say, when it comes to budget time, it's like, what's, you got to say, what's the right number? Because there is a right number, right? Is it forty-two? Is it thirty-two? Is it fifty-two? You got to figure that out, right? And, and that never goes away. So, I'm just trying to figure out what's the number. So, then, we see the information that was showed to us, and you start to dig into it, and you start to see other communities are actually staffed much differently than we are, much differently. And I actually talked to a bunch of fire chiefs, so they're doing it without those communities burning down, and, you know, public safety at risk. And they're small too. Their, their footprint is like ours. They're, they're small cities like us. It's not, you know, in fact, our square miles is probably a little smaller than a lot of these. So, I haven't seen anything. I mean, I'm looking at this from every angle I can that paints a different picture, and it doesn't. And so, then I go back in time and go, okay, what got us here? All right, so, we didn't always have this staffing, nor did we always in Bristol, Virginia, have these number of fire stations. It happened around the time of annexation, when the city annexed the county and picked up those neighborhoods and went all the way up to exit seven, or exit seven, where all that is, we built a new school, we added fire stations, we hired firemen. That's what happened, and it happened in the mid-seventies. Prior to that, we were about the population we are now, fifteen to sixteen thousand, and it was a lot lower, you know, rate of staffing than we're talking about here, right? And the city was safe then. So, so then you say, what happened? So, the population boomed because we annexed. We immediately brought in three or four huge neighborhoods. The high school went up, all the elements, the population went up, and it approached twenty thousand. And so, they added fire stations, and they added firemen. And then what's happened since then is it's continued decline till we wake up today. So, what we're seeing, in my opinion, is we, we ignored that trend for that entire time period, which what we should have done is let natural attrition and let natural adjustment of one person here and there, two, over time, keep us in line. And we didn't. So, we mismanaged the situation. The council's mismanaged it. So, population went like this, staffing didn't change, and now all of a sudden, we wake up, and we got this huge gap that shows that we're way different than all these other communities, where these other communities are actually managing it year to year, every few years, they're not letting their, they're not letting their employment staffing get out of line. So, so we just, as a city, until I see data that proves different, we just didn't manage the situation right. And it is unfortunate, because we are talking about people's lives. We're talking about families. There is no doubt about that. I get that. I've laid off people. Last two years, I've left a ton of people. It hurts every time you do it. I understand that. We all love firemen, and it's not, it's not about the firemen. I told you the other night, every time I see them, every time I see them out, they're professionally dressed, they're doing a good job. It's, it's not about that at all. And this would be done, I'll make one last statement, this has to be done irregardless of the falls. I'd be sitting here saying this if exit five wasn't even happening. I promise you. It has to stand on its own two feet too, right? So, every department, you know, you have got a message here that you better manage yourself year to year, and don't ever, ever let yourself get out of whack, because eventually, it comes home to roost, right? And so, it's now the perfect storm. The city was financially mismanaged, right? We borrowed way too much money. We got all kinds of expenses. Our revenues, and we saw the revenues are done, have, what have they done, what? The tax revenues have went down, so revenues are dropping, expenses are up. We have no more mo, borrowing capacity, so voila. It's almost checkmate on the chessboard, right? We didn't ask for that, but that's reality. So, there's only so many dollars that this city has. So, last year, the real estate taxes went up significantly to try to keep up with the expenses, you know, to keep paying the bills so we weren't borrowing short-term notes. Well, that's not right either. You got elderly people out here on fixed income. Why should they be paying more just because we can't manage our expenses? That's not right, folks. I don't care who you are, that ain't right. And the other thing's not right is taking away money from kids' education, which we haven't given, because we've cut their budget every year, right? Because that's the only chance they got. So, that's not right either. So, it's a sad day. But the bottom line is, you need to pray about it, because we're talking about the city here. We're talking about the city's future. We're not talking about next year, we're talking about the next five to ten years. And it's better to do what you need to do in the short term and do it quickly, and get yourself organized, and then start being managed properly going forward than it is to piecemeal it over five or ten years. So, you know, it's unfortunate, and I haven't seen a single person come up to this podium or out in public and give any more information that they have found that says what we're saying is wrong. Every thing, everything I've read on, on social media and heard, it's, it's all been emotional stuff. And, and this council, I'm, I'm just here to tell you, folks, this council is not going to manage the city on emotion. We got to manage it on, on facts and what everything's telling us, and do the right thing based on what we're able to do, because we only get so much revenue from the tax base. And every dollar we spend is important, and where we spend it's important. And we're not trying to put public safety at risk at all. We're trying to say, are we in line, are we out of line? And it looks like, in my opinion, we, we're out of line, and we have been out of line for a number of years. And now we've got to do something about it. So, we're the bad guys. I get it. We're the bad guys. But we're going to get this city's financial health back, and it's just part of the process. It's just part of what we have to do. We don't want to do it. It's not a single one of us standing up, say, I want to do this, we don't want to do it. But, but it's pretty obvious and clear, we're going to have to do it. And you notice, we're cutting everything, and I'll tell the council right now, I'm willing, cut, cut my council payout. I don't care. I don't need that. Cut it all out. Somebody said that on Face, Facebook. Fine, cut it out. I don't need paid.
Yeah, everybody thinks we're getting rich up here.
Five hundred dollars, and we've spent thirty-five hours at a minimum down here in these meetings. So, no, I don't need five hundred dollars a month. I don't need a cell phone, I don't need any of that stuff. And I don't think anybody up here, if they do, then they, God help them. But, you know.
I have to have two.
Well, I mean, seriously, this, this, it's, it's, you know, realistically, government doesn't owe any of you anything. I'm just going to tell you. I'm not going to apologize to say that. Yeah, you're going to lose your job, some of you are. But government is not an employer. Government is a service paid for by taxpayers who happen to be really old. The demographics in this city is old. And, you know, there's risk in everything. Y'all say, well, well, you know, I've, I've heard all the arguments you make. I've heard some of the nasty stuff you said, you know? And I'll tell you this, I wouldn't do a thing for a union, from my personal perspective. If somebody's a union man, then they ain't my, they ain't, they ain't part of my game plan, you know? So, for that, some of the things you've done, going door to door, being on the media, I'm sure we'll see you down here come, public hearing and first reading, parading, I always figure you will, cry, bring people in here. Bottom line is, if this council folds right now, Bristol folds. If this council folds, Bristol folds. And I folded for twenty-five thousand dollars to give to the CBB, which I really hate. And I'm not sure I'm going to do that yet. But I'm going to tell you, I'm not going to cut police, not in the day and time we have, no. There's no way. No way. Who else do we got? Like Mr. Mumpower says, children. You're thinking about yourself. You can turn it around, and you can say, it's about the people. If it were about the people, you'd volunteer instead of being paid. So, you can say all the ugly stuff you want to say. You can do all the good little things you want to do, but I will assure you, June thirtieth, unless there's a coward up here that turns, and I disagree everything you said, Mr. Hartley, we've got, we've got a pony up now. Your idea is, you've worked for government so long, that's all you've done in your whole life. He's worked for government. He funded rights, grants for government, or private entity like Barter Theater. When you work for government, you never know what it's like to make a payroll. When that's all you've done is work for government, you don't know what it's like to have been a taxpayer that's paying for your service. So, you can be, you can be intimidating, you can be angry, you can be whatever. We've got an obligation to take care of the people. I'm not a politician. Recall, I've seen that one, beautiful. You all recall, recall tomorrow. But you're too late. This budget's coming down. This budget's coming down. In just a minute, I'm going to ask our CFO for the numbers with the, using the thirty-three figure. I need a number with benefits and salary cuts of ten people plus billions.
We're over tall, six fifty.
Is it six fifty?
That was what was in the presentation from the fire chief the other day.
So, you haven't verified, have you verified that?
Well, that's, I've been working on that. Because you don't know exactly who, that number is hard to nail down. I do feel like that's a reasonable estimate at this time. If it results in more of a savings than that, you know, that money right now currently is in the budget in salaries and fringe, it won't be spent.
Here's the deal. Here's the deal. Here's the deal. We, a minimum six fifty, if it means an extra position. My position is, that was presented to us as a representation to us, by someone who's supposed to be in charge of that department. So, we're going to, it's going to either be reflected from my position in another job, or if it's more than six fifty, and it nearest our benefit, and you keep it at, uh, ten. or if it's more than six-fifty and it nourished our benefit and you keep it at ten. Okay? That's where I come from on that.
Will you repeat that last part? I didn't understand.
I'm saying, if, if, if it's more than six-fifty at ten positions, that endures to our benefit. If it doesn't come up to six-fifty, then you, we're going to come back and we're going to take a look as council instead of the thirty-three that we're talking about maintaining. We're going to take a look, I suggest, at seeing if we need to go down further to make it to the six-fifty cut.
I think we just need to settle on the number.
And figure it out.
And just however it hashes out.
All right.
That's the savings. Because we don't need to bring this back up.
Okay.
We need, we need to be done with it.
And the teeny-weeny silver lining in all this is Bristol, Tennessee is opening up a new fire station. So a lot of our guys are going to have a shot at keeping their same, living the same place they live now, working basically in the same city, so.
Johnson City's hiring, I heard.
Well, I mean, I don't, it's not, I don't think they're going to be out in the cold too long because they're well-trained and they're good people. So... That wasn't the driving reason. That's just the only bright spot in that whole thing. If we do it next year, everything's full around here, they have to leave town. At least this way, they got a shot at staying in town.
What's the bottom line then with six-fifty? Give us a, give us a new thing, estimate with.
Can I have one clarification, just to make sure?
Uh-uh.
Um, so right now, they are budgeted for forty-six positions in the fire department. When, and the fire chief's here, I think, so he can correct me if I'm wrong. But he was giving thirty-three as the operations and then on top of that would be the two and a half administration.
Thirty-three firemen and then his, what, three people?
So, that would be thirty-three plus two and a half, thirty-four and a half. So that would be a reduction of eleven and a half.
Yes.
And so I just want to make sure I'm on the same page.
And it still comes up to six-fifty, Ms. Crowder?
Which puts the running total, using that number, at, um, plus, we've reduced the twenty-five thousand for C V B and B C M, seven-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixteen.
Surplus.
Yes.
Well, we'll find out what the number is. Let's just concentrate on the individual items. Because whatever the number is, we want to toss it into reserve to cover us in twenty-twenty.
All right.
And that money's not going to be touched.
Right. That will be, and if I have to start coming to the meetings when I'm off council, I'm certainly going to remind everybody. I, I can read the budget.
So my, I, I misspoke and said the wrong number. Forty-six with their budgeted, thirty-three plus two and a half is thirty-five and a half. And that's a reduction of ten and a half. But the number of six-fifties is the same. It's just I had, I said eleven, I said eleven and a half instead of ten and a half.
So six-fifty's close enough for hanger needs. All right.
Were there any other items?
Uh...
Now we took the elephant out of the room.
Is... We got the fifty grand for the country music. We're keeping in the commission for the arts because it's a match type thing, the five grand. First of country music.
What are you saying? We have zeroed those out right now?
Yeah.
Well, the sheet I was given is not tied into the new budget, so I'm confused as to which is which. It's, it's...
We, we've got a new sheet. Here, we got an... Oh, you did?
This is the sheet I'm looking at, the one you gave me tonight.
No.
It shows five thousand dollars.
That's from the other night.
This is, this one's from tonight.
Oh, okay.
Right there.
My bad. I'm on, out of five or ten sheets, I'm on the wrong one. All right. Yeah, we want to look at the arts thing that's on down into the purple. Where is it? It was five thousand dollars.
Where are you at?
I'm trying to find it.
We've cut all that out the other night.
We got zeroed out, so it's not on there.
Yeah, we, we done away with that the other night.
Correct.
Right.
The only thing we can still have discussion on is...
But I, I think that's a matching grant situation. If we, if they give five, we get five. If we don't give them five, they lose ten grand.
Is that true?
If they, if they apply for the Commission on the Arts Grant, there has to be a matching contribution from the city. And so, yes, that is true. But right now, we've taken all that out based on the discussion the other night.
Right, I know it. We took a lot of stuff out. I'm just, after thinking about some of these impacts, I'm looking to verify that if that is the case, if we take away five, they actually lose ten. Is that...
They lose an extra five, so yes, that would be ten.
And they get that from the state?
Yes, Commission of, Commission on the Arts.
So we double the money on that contribution.
Where does that go? Where does that go?
In the past, it's gone to Rhythm and Roots and used the contribution we give to them to leverage that. But I think it's, uh, I'd have to look at the paperwork, but I believe it's probably at the discretion of council how that money gets allocated. But it has to go to an arts organization. I think they're the only ones that would qualify.
Certainly the only ones that have expressed interest and they do the application. The money flows through the city.
Well, we know where the thing, we know where everything is. We can sit here, we can go through it item by item, but I just, we, what, where are our votes? And where do we get an ordinance? I mean, we could go, we could pass a budget ordinance here, a resolution here. Because there's no sense sitting here in hem and haw and going through everything again.
Well, I just, that's the last item that I have.
Were there any other?
My only comment is here, uh, the chamber dues. I remember that, the last printout we've got, the other night. It was in the three thousand range. And tonight, it's in the four, mid-four thousand. What happened there?
At the last meeting, the mayor reminded me that we had received an email from Ms. Reinhardt telling me that I had the information in there incorrectly. And when I looked, she was right. The actual dues are the amount that's in there tonight.
What's the dues based on?
It's based on our number of employees.
What?
Number of employees.
Did she leave? That's correct, right?
Well, there's, if, if we cut the fire like we're going to, that's going to go down.
That, yeah, if it turns out to be forty-three, ninety, whatever, it's going to be chump change. We don't have to worry.
Okay, my question then is, how come for the sixteen-seventeen budget, it was thirty-two, thirty-five and they left it out of the seventeen-eighteen? So we don't have a comparison there. How, have we hired that many people in the last two years that it would go from thirty-two, thirty-five to forty-four, fifty-seven?
I can't go with that.
I don't think so.
We, we had the wrong number in last year. Was, in the email she sent telling me that we had the amount wrong. It was a two percent increase this year. So if you take two percent off that number, that's what the dues are for the present.
What is the chamber, why, why is the city of Bristol, Virginia realistically a city? You know, paid for by taxpayers? Why are we even involved with the chamber? I mean, realistically, I understand, you know, a business, that, you know, a, a convenience store. But a city? Really? Why? I'm asking you. Why?
I, I, well, I mean, certainly to be a member of the chamber is your all's discretion.
Well, I'm...
It's mainly because we don't have the personnel or the expertise. We can get it, but we don't have it to do the tourism outreach.
Well, this is two separate things, partner. This is a convention.
Well, that's what the chamber does.
Well, we give them money for this. I don't think we need to be a member of the Chamber of Commerce. Why does, why does, whoever our mayor is need to be in the Chamber of Commerce? What is, what kind of ridiculous thing is that?
Well, that's just the basic fee that all businesses pay.
I'm, I'm not forgiving them a penny. I'm for cutting our dues.
I'm, I can't favor that.
We're going to have a problem getting a resolution here tonight.
We need to look at, in my opinion, we need to look at this as a line item and go up or down. Are we going to fund it or we not? And let's move on with this.
Okay. You want to do it that way?
Uh, if we're going to make any progress, that's what we're going to have to do. Because we're getting scattered all over the place. Either we're giving the chamber money or we're not. And if we are, how much?
A hundred is what I...
I'm at zero.
All right, I'm at a hundred.
We're talking two different things. I'm talking dues. I don't think the city...
Oh, well, yeah.
They move around. They're now, they're now back on this page.
Yeah, we're getting scattered.
Yeah, let's start from the top and work down.
Where are you on that, Kevin? Where are you going?
Hundred.
Hundred.
Okay.
So a hundred.
We'll go a hundred.
All right, and the next change is...
So we got three on a hundred.
Yeah.
Or four. Or three, anyway. So then we go to fifty on the Country Music Association in the gray section.
The gray section?
Or green, gray, it looks gray to me. Next page.
Yeah, gotcha.
Fifty grand.
Yeah.
Got three on that.
With a final letter, no more? Tell her invoice, take, take her invoice and do what they do with that.
As a council, we can vote no more next year. It's, we can't tell a future council what to do.
They can take that invoice and, you know, wherever it may shine.
And the Country Music Commissioner for the Arts restored the five.
Where you at on that?
Still in the gray section.
That was the other night. We agreed not to do that.
Well, that's before we realized there's a matching grant involved there that can...
Did you take the offsetting revenues out?
Hey, man, it's...
Yes, we did.
Yeah, we had to put it back.
But would you, you'd have to put it back in Rhythm and Roots, right? Because that's what they...
Yeah, that's how they apply.
Sixteen thousand last year.
Yeah, that, that's how they apply, Rhythm and Roots. I don't know...
No. No.
Since we don't, since we have zeroed Rhythm and Roots out, I'm not sure that would...
Make any difference.
Yeah, I, I don't think so. I think the, the, that fifty thousand's if...
I'm no wrong here.
Okay. So leave it blank then.
And then the other only item we have to discuss on that is chamber dues. And I want that relooked at if it's employee-wise. Because I don't see how we go from, from that thirty-two, thirty-five to forty-four, fifty-seven.
Because that's the wrong...
I don't even think we need it.
That's the wrong number.
Seventy to forty-two.
The council doesn't, but I think our business is needed.
Well, I think from a business standpoint, I'll put my business hat on that, you know, I'm not with Doug on this one. It, it's the optics. You gotta, you know, the city has to say, I do support the Chamber of Commerce. I support what they do. You're sending a positive message when you do that.
Yeah.
You know, but businesses say, well, why is the city not supporting the chamber? It sends, it sends the wrong message to the business community. So, you know, it's four thousand, seven hundred dollars. It's not a big deal and it's optics more than anything. It's, it's, it's what you do to say, we support, you know, the Chamber of Commerce to help us get business. And that's the way I look at it.
I don't mind, I, I agree with you. I see where you're coming from.
Okay, so we got three votes for that at least.
Not more.
Okay, so were there any other items that needed clarification? I guess, Ms. Crowder, because...
So the, well, okay, you're asking me or do you all have anything?
Well, do we have, first, do we have anything? And then we'll double check with Ms. Crowder. They've been kind of keeping a running list of everything and so that they, they are clear enough that they can go back and finalize the budget ordinance. That's what we have to walk out of here tonight, that they, they have answers on everything.
Questioner, where are we on the capital? What did we decide to do on the vehicles again?
Yeah, we need to go back to capital.
Where it stands right now is we have, have them in lease.
All right, let's, let's agree on, let's agree on buying a used vehicle for the detective.
Yes, absolutely.
And then leave the other two in the budget to be leased?
Yes, sir.
If it turns out we need them.
Yes, sir.
Is that fair?
It's fair.
We don't have to change the number, change the way we look.
You have to approve it anyway. The capital lease has to come before the council and approve it to be done because we do that on resolution. So we can, we can always say no if the situation changes. But I say, put it in there and, and leave it in there and we'll go, we'll go approve it when it makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, this costs in the budget, doesn't mean you have to spend it.
That's right. This costs in the budget, doesn't mean you have to spend it.
That'd be a novel, fucking with it.
Well, we, we've been doing pretty good in the last couple of years.
All right. Were there any other items that needed clarification?
Yes, so, um...
Yeah, the tax, the real estate taxes.
That's, that's what I was going to say. The question now is what, with the surplus, what do you want to do with the surplus?
On the real estate? Put it in a D R I account.
We need clarification.
You mean the seven-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand?
Right.
Uh, I, I think the, the consensus, and correct me if I'm wrong, with that surplus was that it all went towards reserve?
Keep it in reserve for the falls.
Yes, sir.
If necessary.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you're talking about the money we've saved. If we reduce expenses, though, we're talking about, all that goes in the, in the reserve.
We've cut the rate to one-seventeen for one-nineteen. So we're giving a two-cent reduction in the real estate rate. That's already in the budget, has been for the last two copies. So anything we've done tonight and previous nights, if it results in excess revenue, it all goes into the reserve to protect us in case the falls doesn't develop as fast as we want it to. Is that fair?
Yeah. That's not the reason we're putting it in there.
Well, I know that, but I meant that...
The reason, the reason we got to put it in there is the other thing that's a problem with this city is they, the reserve fund wasn't built up to the level, right? So if anything goes wrong with the economy, right? And our tax revenues on the top line go down and you don't have that reserve fund, guess what? You're back to borrowing money to operate the city. And you can't do that. So you got to put the reserve funds up and build them up to probably fifteen to eighteen million dollars. So when that economy does go south, you're still okay. That's what's putting the city on a good financial footing. That's the reason you do it. Nothing about the falls.
Well, I mean, that's just the, the first, we, that's a known bump in the road we're coming to. You never know what will happen between then and now or afterwards. So the buildup is for all kinds of reasons.
Is that our resolution?
The consensus, consensus.
I think it's in our consensus.
Uh, yeah, I like it going into reserve fund. I would say that the two cents coming off the real estate tax rate, we've already said, has to go back because the appraised values, right? So if everything goes into the reserve fund, I mean, we've got to put it in there. But the message we're sending is, once we build that reserve fund up, we are putting the city in a position where that real estate tax rate is going to come down.
Oh, yeah.
It is going to come down.
Absolutely.
It can't come down next year because we don't have our reserve fund built up. It can't come down next year because we don't have our reserve fund built up, but once it does, and we're in a healthy zone, the real estate tax rate's too high, and we all know it.
And yeah, and if the, if the falls develops like it's supposed to, that's even easier to reduce rates.
If we ever get a commissioner of revenue that can project revenues properly, so we can predict what the revenue line's going to do based on the, all of the retail in the, in the city, then we can have a better picture of whether we're okay or where we got a bigger problem, right? So we don't have that picture yet.
One long-term look, see, too, is if you have a decent reserve like you're speaking of, when we have to refinance bonds, whether it's the falls or anything else, we're going to have a heck of a good interest rate compared to what we got now.
Which saves our citizens.
Yeah, that saves money in the long haul. So everything we're doing, while it's horrible as you know what, the long term is positive. And that's the only thing I can hang my hat on, otherwise, I just, I can't.
Now, you took all that other stuff out, we've already talked about, like the city attorney, the I D A, the, all that travel we talked about, all those communications, all, all that stuff that's already been documented.
The stuff we talked about Saturday was in the one we gave you, we took that out in the one we gave you on Tuesday. I'll remind you, on communications, we expect there to be more, and we'll come back to you within three months on that, but we did do an initial cut.
And there may be more when we have a meeting, when it's coming up, another meeting, we may be asking for more from another source, you know, so we may actually get up over a million-dollar surplus this year.
Yeah, I mean, we can deal with that.
So what, what, do you have a number of what you think it looks like as far as what would go into the general fund?
It's the seven-hundred and.
In reserve?
Additional seven-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixteen.
If I don't think else.
Additional from what you show here?
Yeah, we have a million already put in there.
Even though we took a whole bunch of money out of the.
We had already put those in from the other night.
Yeah, I actually added some back.
So that's already been taken into account.
You added two forty back in the other night for the length.
Because the total number that we found as far as reduction of expenses and stuff is a lot bigger number than the six-hundred-some-thousand in total.
Agreed. Saturday, when we came in, we were at a deficit of just over five hundred thousand. And that didn't include the tax rate adjustment as well, that came, that came into that number.
What did you do with the school system? Did you count it at one-forty, one-seventy, or did you count it at one, what, where'd you count that at?
The school system, we reduced it seventy-five thousand.
I think we'll get more than that.
Well, as again, you can always deal with more, it's when you have the less, it creates the problem. So try to be conservative on revenue and overextending on expense.
I will tell you that for the ordinance, and we've put a sample up, just because we wanted you all to see, it's going to look a little different this year if you're familiar with what it's looked like in the past. And Jane, if you'll scroll to the top of it real quick, and we'll move our way down.
Okay.
The, the important thing you see in the synopsis is that it lists the, the total fund numbers. So for example, if we were to identify an additional cut and you were going to put it in reserve, or if we said, you know, oh, wait, we can't, can't do this, we need to add a little back, and we take it out of reserve between now and when you adopt, we wouldn't have to re-advertise. We have broken out all of the funds, so you can see City General Fund, and then we'll list the different revenue sources, and this is, of course, is the revenue, what you're looking at right now. Those, those will have numbers out from it, since we have numbers, we haven't populated that yet. We have the City Capital Project Fund, then you move down to the School Operations Fund, and this year, we are listing all of the funds for schools and not just lumping it together, School Textbook Fund, School Food Service Fund, School, you all can read, so. And then the Solid Waste Disposal Fund, and then likewise on the expenditures. And so now, based on the consensus that you all have given us tonight, Ms. Bradlin and I'll go back tomorrow and get this populated, as well as write up the ordinance to move forward with the public hearing on May thirtieth. My next question to you all, and this is important for the ad, is do you all want to have the public hearing here, which is where we usually do, given the amount of changes? If you'd like to move, we could move to the Virginia High Auditorium possibly, I can certainly check and see if that's available.
What about the courthouse?
You might want to see if that's available.
Well, the courthouse is not really going to give us any more seats than what we have in here.
We don't think, well, but we have, there's, you know, there's a single in and out entrance and so forth. Bottom line is, I think the courthouse is conveniently located, there's parking, seating's not going to be an issue, if, you know, people are going to come to talk, and then once they talk, you know, somebody else will come in, they can, there's places to sit out there, we can open up both courtrooms, we can open up the general district court and so forth, and also the circuit court, and I think that's a place to do it.
I, I would say, so you're saying that have people come in as they speak?
No, they can get seats and they can get.
But there's not another, there's as many seats, I mean, I'm not as familiar with the courthouse as you are, Doug, but, but I mean, I don't see any of those courtrooms being larger than this.
If they're not, I don't think they're necessarily, I think the circuit court is probably bigger than this.
I mean, the reason to move it would be to have a larger location, not because you would anticipate a larger crowd coming.
I'm, I'm asking if we have.
If security's concerned. We've already, we're already properly dealing with how to handle security if we had.
I want it to be secure, I anticipate that there'll be.
And we, we're already in the process of taking care of that problem, so I think the Virginia High Auditorium will be sufficient.
We all are.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Sound good.
All right.
Guys, I appreciate everybody's time, we've gone through hell and back, and I appreciate everybody's hard work.
Thank you, sir.
All right, and I will second that, I appreciate, council, it's all right. I appreciate the staff, the department heads, and the public that have attended these meetings, and as I say, we, we have come to the end of this process, so we will meet on the thirtieth to have the public hearing and hear comments from the public. So with that being said, we'll call the meeting adjourned.